Good afternoon. The agenda review session for Wednesday, July 20, 2016. We have public hearings. ABC charges Casmas Incorporated trading as J.J. Tavern 732 Lounge. Liquor license number 1214-33034003. Number two, continuation/termination of conduct conditions on ABC license, perserved. Perserved Incorporated trading as Persid. Trading as Mia Mie Tiara Mar liquor license number 1214-33047005. Number three, continuation/termination of conditions on ABC license, DeGala Cafe and Restaurant Incorporated trading as DeGala Cafe and Restaurant liquor license number 1214-33007003. We have ordinances on second reading. 601 Orders to amend supplement revised general orders in the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10, 16, 050, Schedule 29. Time limit parking, Liberty Street. 602 Orders to amend supplement revised general orders in the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Point 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10, 12, 040, Schedule 6, Stop Intersections. Add Reservoir Avenue and Park Driveway, Stop Sign on Park Driveway. Nickel Avenue Sanford Street, Stop Sign on Sanford Street. Sanford Street Nickel Avenue, Stop Sign on Nickel Avenue. Nickel Avenue Park Driveway, Stop Sign on Park Driveway. 603 Orders to amend supplement revised general orders in the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10, 16, 20. Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, End Schedule 26. No Parking Certain Hours. Alternate Parking Street Cleaning Program, Van Dyke Avenue. Orders for discussion on first reading. 604 Orders to amend supplement revised general orders in the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10, 16, 20, Schedule 24. No Parking at Any Time, Park Driveway. 605 Orders to adopt the Ferret Redevelopment Plan in the City of New Brunswick. Resolutions. 661 Approve Agenda Amendments. 662 Approve Payrolls. 663 Authorize Refund for Revened Tax Sales Certificates. 664 Is Pulled as Unnecessary by the City Clerk. 665 Disposition of Charges Against Casmas Inc. trading as J.J. Tavern 733-732 Lounge. 186 Hamilton Street liquor license number 1214-33034003. 666 Is Pulled at the Request of the Applicant. 667 Is Held at the Request of Chief Financial Officer. 668 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 041. 658 Use to Pay Legal Fees in Amount of $2,091. Lawrence Greederman Esquire from Deputy Christopher Borhauer in the matter of Rock Regis versus City of New Brunswick in $24,174 to $26,265. 669 Authorize Payment for Emergency Procurement. Roading Utility. Pair the Roar-Raw Water Main in your Rutgers Garden Area. Garrison Enterprise Incorporated not to exceed $27,016, 68047. Purchase Order Numbers D85647. 670 Approve Chapter 159 Budgeting Services. State of New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development for New Jersey Library Revist Career Connections Grant in Amounts $54,060. 671 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 061-690. Additional Amount of $1,055 for T-shirts for the Play Safe Program for Youth Services with all colors LLC. Furnished delivered T-shirts, Rebid specification number 510-16PR not to exceed $1,055. Approval List Change Order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 672 Approve Organization to Advertise. Digital Video Forensic Software for the Police Department. Specification Number 536-6EP. 673 Approve Payment to Home and Law of Lurkus Dukas. LLP Bradley J. Ferens, JXT. For Hearing Law for Disciplinary Action Hearing of Eddie Booker not to exceed $1,00140. 674 Approve Purpose by Police Department Under State Contract A 89851-SM0003. Software License and Related Service from Shai International Corporation. Software License will for the Police Department not to exceed $2,042501. 675 Approve Purpose by Police Department Under State Contract A 85943 from Horizon Business Networks Incorporated. Authorization for Ethernet Ethernet Services for the Police Department. The term is January 1, 2016, December 31, 2018. It's a three-year not to exceed $69,768. It's non-proton. 676 Approve Award of Contracts for Work Uniforms for the Police Department and Municipal Court with Atlantic Tactical Incorporated not to exceed $35,000. With Sons Uniform Incorporated not to exceed $2,0750. Term is 12-month period commencing July 21, 2016, and ending July 20, 2017. Specification Numbers 514-16P. 677 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 049616. Reason Change Street Location of Event. Approve Request for Street Closing requested by Rutgers Department of Major Events and Programs. Location is College Avenue between Senior Street and Hamilton Street for Rutgers University Involvement Fair. Date is Monday, September 5, 2016. Rain Date is Friday, September 9, 2016. Time is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 678 Approve Request for Street Closing requested by Rutgers University Police Department. Rutgers University Movement Dates honors college students. The date, Thursday, September 1, 2016. Location One Way on Seventh Place from College Avenue to George Street. Rutgers University Movement dates College Avenue Street. Saturday, September 3, 2016. Location One Way on College Avenue between Huntington Street and Bishop Place heading south on College Avenue towards Hamilton Street. Time is 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 679 Approve Request for Street Closing. Use of City Park requested by City of New Brunswick. Street Closing Location Sanford Street between Jones Avenue and Nickel Avenue. Park Location Recreation Park. The grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony for Recreation Park. Date is Thursday, July 28, 2016. Rain Date is Tuesday, August 2, 2016. Time is 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 680 Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Tell Your News Association of North America. Location Beale Park for 5K Walking Run to promote charity and hearing in the community. Date is Sunday, September 11, 2016. Time is 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 681 Approve Chapter 159 Budgeting Services. State of New Jersey Division of Highway Transportation Safety for FY 2017 Pedestrian Safety Grant PSF 17-0132 in Amounts $15,000. 682 Authorize Application Acceptance and Execution of Grant for 2016 for 2016 Drive Over or Get Pulled Over Grant Labor Day. 683 Approve Relaxation of City Noise Orders and Road Coaster requested by Mechanical Systems Incorporated. Reason Replace a Water Chiller Unit Located on Upper Roof at 392 George Street. Date is Saturday, July 30, 2016. Rain Date is Sunday, July 31, 2016. Time is 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. 684 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 061677. Change Order Number 5 with Joe Med Contract Incorporated. For Plum Street Sanitary Sewer and Roadway Improvements. Specification Number 886-15. Amount is $2,893. Approval List Change Order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 685 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 061641. Change Order Number 2 with Duane Contract Incorporated. For Library Pump Station Improvements. Specification Number 89315 in Amounts $7,71945. Approval List Change Order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 686 Approve Amendment to Resolution R. 011687. Change Order Number 1R with Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 Sanitary Source improvements. Project Phase 1A specification number 892-15A in Amount $237,72065. Approval List Change Order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 687 Approve Amendment to Resolution R. 071686. Change Order Number 4 with Underground Utilities Corporation. 2015 Sanitary Sources Improvements. Project Phase 1A specification number 892-15S. In Amounts $49,425. Approval List Change Order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 688 Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Black Beach Boys Entertainment. Location is Boyd Park and Amphitheater Stage, the Musical Arts Festival. Saturday, August 6, 2016. Rain Date is Saturday, August 20, 2016. Park Time is 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Amphitheater Stage Time is 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 689 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 061689. Change Order Number 3 with Black Rock Enterprises LLC for Andy Street Storm Saw Improvements. Specification Number 82-15 in Amount $29,28920. Approval List Change Order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 690 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 041623. Change from Street Closing to Sidewalk Use. Approve Request for Use of City Sidewalk requested by Rutgers RWJMS Eric Lee Chandler Health Center. Location Morris Street between Nielsen Street and Juror Street Sidewalk Only. Community Health Day in Celebration of National Health Week. Date is Friday, August 12, 2016. Time 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 691 Approve License with Conditions for 2016-2017 Liquor License. Casmas Incorporated trading as J.J. Tavern 732 Lounge. 186 Hamilton Street liquor license number 1214-33034003.
Just even with respect to that one, in the next two, we're going to have those particular considerations on the hearing with respect to the conditions that are recommended by the Police Department.
Thank you. 692 Approve of License with Conditions for 2016-2017 Liquor License for Perser-Percieve Incorporated Perser therapy against Mia Tiara Mar 14 Jersey Avenue. Liquor License Number 1214-33047005. 693 Approve of License with Conditions for 2016-2017 Liquor License for DeGala Cafe and Restaurant Incorporated. Trading as DeGala Cafe and Restaurant 156 Commercial Avenue. Liquor License Number 1214-33007003. 694 Authorize Tax Plement to Transfer Credits on Tax and Utility Accounts. 695 We Stand Resolution R. 071604 as to Liquor License Number 1214-3303003 for that person's name, Michael License. Can't pronounce that, I don't think. I don't want to wreck the cup. That's easier. So that's our agenda review session for this evening. Clerk, please call the law, or be in order.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti will be late today. Council President Eadie.
Here. Please be advised that notice requirements of the Oklahoma Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place to conduct the full public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate rule of the board in the lobby of City Hall in Brother New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick naming the whole news Tribune. Please stand before the committee of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have a moment of silence for our many women serving in our armed forces, for our many women in armed forces who've lost their lives in any battle, and for peace around the world with all this stuff going on. We don't have any minutes to vote out this evening. So, Mr. Sidney Turney, we moved into the public hearings, and we'll go right with the ABC charges with Casmas. Would you like to proceed, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the council. The hearing before the council arises out of the result of disciplinary charges filed by Special Detective Ryan DeGraw ABC unit, which he runs the police department dated April 12, 2016, against Casmas Inc. trading as J.J. Tavern slash Lounge 732. The charges as contained in the April 2016 complaint, number 22, in sequence. For the record, the licensee is represented by Mr. Paul Seika, who is present here in the council chamber. For purposes of how we will proceed, Mr. Seika and I discussed the most efficient way that we believe to make the presentation to the council, which will sit and hear the facts and testimony and make an ultimate decision, is that we will go count by count. Mr. Seika has several witnesses here that may only need to speak to a specific count. So, to keep some order to the presentation, we thought it best that after the city presents its witness or witnesses on a particular count, and after any cross-examination by Mr. Seika of those witnesses, that the licensee would present the witness or witnesses on that count, should they have any particular witness. And that way, we could hopefully move through this without jumping all over, if you will. So, having said that, if that's acceptable to the council, I would like to call the city's first witness, who is Detective Ryan DeGraw.
Good evening.
Detective, before you, I'm going to let you sit here at this little table which we set up because we've got some paperwork I'm going to ask you to look at. It's going to be more convenient. But before you sit down, raise your right hand.
Right.
So what do you tell the truth, the whole truth, about two something guy?
Thank you. Now, Detective, are you employed, sir?
Yes, sir.
And by whom?
City of New Brunswick.
And what capacity, sir?
Detective of the Police Department.
Okay, are you assigned to any particular unit or division with the Police Department currently?
Yes, sir, Special Investigations Unit.
Okay, and in the Special Investigations Unit, do you have duties and responsibilities of ABC enforcement within the City of New Brunswick?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what do those duties entail, if you can briefly?
From education to enforcement of ABC laws, inspections of establishments. Yes, that's pretty simple.
Okay, with respect to that particular position and title, how long have you served in that position, sir?
Two years.
Two years. And in connection with your position regarding ABC enforcement, have you received any advanced training, seminars, certifications that you can just briefly summarize for us?
Yes, sir, I have. I attended the schools provided by the New Jersey State ABC for their investigator course for the beginner and advanced course.
And does that involve the education relative to the operation of NJSA 33:1-1, the liquor license statute, as well as the administrative regulations?
Yes, sir.
And in connection with that training, have you been enforcing ABC laws and regulations here in the City of New Brunswick?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Now, I want to direct your attention to a particular establishment known as Casmas Inc. trading as J.J. Tavern, also known as Lounge 732. Are you familiar with that establishment?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me where it's located in the City of New Brunswick?
186 Hamilton Street.
And is that particular location in a commercial area, residential area, mixed use, if you can describe it briefly?
It's a primarily residential neighborhood.
And there's a side street that this particular establishment is on?
Yes, sir.
And what street is that?
High Street.
Okay, is High Street a residential street for all intensive purposes?
Yes, sir.
Do people live on that street?
Yes, sir.
Are there other residences around this particular establishment?
There's residences as well on Hamilton Street.
With respect to the type of operation, what is your knowledge as to what their licensed operation permits?
There are a Class C disciplinary license which allows them the sale of alcohol on site for consumption, the sale of alcohol on site for takeaway packaged goods, as well as the sale of food in conjunction with sale of alcohol.
And to your knowledge, does this establishment offer food for sale, or are you aware that they advertise saying?
They have advertised that they offer food for sale. I've never personally observed food to be for sale at the establishment.
Now, over the last two years as the special investigations detective with ABC and the New Brunswick Police Department, have you had occasion to be in the establishment?
Yes, sir.
On multiple occasions?
Yes, sir.
And in connection with your visits to this establishment, have they all been in your official capacity as a police officer in this particular unit?
Yes, sir.
Now, I want to direct your attention to last calendar year, 2015. Currently, we are in license year 2015-16. Technically, the license year ends on June 30 of the year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Last year, were you involved in some charges that were brought against the licensee of this particular establishment?
Yes, I was.
And as a result of those charges in your investigation, was a stipulation of settlement entered into, to your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to show you what's been marked C1 for identification, which I'll just ask you to take a quick look at and tell me what, if anything, that is that relates to this matter.
So this is the stipulation of settlement that was entered into November of 2015 regarding the 732 Lounge.
Okay, is it signed, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Who is it signed by? Can you recognize the signatures?
Appears to be yourself and Louis Marchetta, the attorney at the time for 732 Lounge.
Is there any other signatures on that last page?
There is, but I can't make it out.
Okay. Are you familiar with the name Cupertino Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
That would be the owner effectively of Casmas Inc.
Does that appear to be his signature, or you don't know?
We'll agree, we'll agree that it is.
Okay, we stipulate that it is. Take a look at the stipulation settlement with respect to the special conditions. Were there special conditions placed upon this license by consent as a result of this stipulation of settlement?
Yes, sir.
And I direct your attention to paragraphs three and four. Can you just tell us what the special conditions are?
The licensee shall employ an extra degree of licensed police officer in accordance to procedures set forth in Orders 0109903 between the hours of 10:30 p.m. and 2:30 p.m. Friday and Saturday evenings. And the licensee shall provide a licensed police department ABC enforcement with notification of changes to the employee list and/or scheduling of any special events or promotional events of the seventy-two hours prior to the change of the list or the event.
Now, there came a point in time in April of 2016 that as a result of your investigative activity, you caused charges to be brought against the licensed establishment, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If I could have this just marked C1A for identification. Take a look at this particular exhibit. Tell me what that is. Do you recognize that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that the listing of charges that you caused to be filed against this establishment?
Yes, sir.
And they're dated April 12, 2016?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a look at the first charge there. With respect to charge number one, does that particular charge make reference to a special condition that we just spoke about that was agreed to and in effect regarding the licensee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just tell us briefly in layman's terms, if you will, for the council, what was that special condition?
The licensee has to provide the Police Department, specifically a special investigation unit, with any notice of changes of her employees or special events. Anytime a DJ or promoter comes in, they're considered an employee, so any kind of special event would prompt a change in the employee list.
Okay, and why is that important?
It's necessary for the licensee to maintain an accurate count of who their employees are. It coincides with monies being paid out, monies coming into the establishments, and preventing the licensed establishment from being used for criminal activity.
And do the knowledge of special events help to inform the Police Department relative to any large crowds or any issues that may result, so they can be aware of it before the pattern?
Yes, sir, absolutely. If you anticipate having, you know, a very large crowd inside an establishment, a residential neighborhood, I can notify the supervisors for the shifts that are working, and they can place an officer out there to deter any kind of issues with the crowds, especially considering many times these events end at 2:00 in the morning. Most of folks in the neighborhood may be sleeping, you know, you don't have officers available to disperse any crowds. There's nobody hanging around making noise causing quality of life violations.
And just so, for the benefit of the council, if a licensee hires a DJ to come in or a special promoter on that particular date and advertises for it, is that particular individual supposed to be named on their employee list?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if someone is there working on behalf of the licensee, whether it be a DJ or a special promoter, that person is considered an employee and has to be on the employee list for purposes of ABC regulations?
Absolutely, even if that's the only time that they're going to be there.
Okay. And was that part and parcel of that special condition that we just talked about, that the licensee was supposed to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Did there come a point in time when you caused a review to be conducted as to any special events regarding the licensed establishment?
Yes.
Okay, let me show you what's been marked C2 for identification. And take a look at that, and tell the council what that is and how you came upon that particular information about the petition.
These were publicly available event promotions that were found on social media websites for the 732 Lounge, occurring after the stipulation agreement that we'd come to for the previous charges.
Were you or your department advised within 72 hours of all those events that are there?
No.
And how many are there approximately?
Approximately 40.
And with respect to those events, do you have any reason to believe those events weren't held at the establishment?
I do not.
With respect to those events and the individuals who are named in those promotions, all those individuals, DJ whatever and promoter so-and-so, they would have to be listed on the employee list, correct?
Correct.
Were you ever provided with updated employee lists indicating that these individuals were going to be employees of the establishment on that particular evening? As a result of that discovery, therefore, did you cause count number one to be charged against the licensee for violation of NJSA 33:31?
Yes.
And the ABC manual, if you will, has recommended penalties for different violations, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And there's a gradation in penalty as well with respect to multiple offenses of the same nature?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that what usually guides you or other law enforcement personnel when they go and see what the potential penalty or fine is?
Yes.
And in this particular case, the guideline, if you will, is a 10-day suspension for this type of violation?
Upon first offense, this would have been a 10-day suspension. Considering it was violated 40 times on a first offense basis, he hadn't been charged with it previously, it could be charged 10 days times 40. It could be potential for up to 400 days for just that one offense of suspension.
Does that one count, one offense? I have no further questions of Detective DeGraw on count one. I don't know if Mr. Seika now wants to ask him some questions or present any witnesses.
If I could just start with the former stipulation.
Sure.
Detective, let me just show you the list of charges that predated the stipulation that was agreed to. So this would have been not the ones currently pending, but the ones that were charged last And as part of the stipulation, so all of those charges were pending last year, and the licensee enters this stipulation agreeing to non-vault pleas to counts five, seven, 10, and 12.
Yes.
Could you read count five for the county?
On June 12, 2015, you failed to keep or maintain books and account with true, complete, and accurate all respects of the rules of due sin for inspection upon the manner of violation of NJSA 13:23.32. Then it went A through H, and H was up through 1 through 8, up through various items that not kept on premise, including loan for the license, no employee list, no federal tax stamp, past delivery slips or invoices, records of business transactions, no sales tax certificates, five years' records of all money received in the course of business, including alcoholic beverage sales, food sales, miscellaneous income, five years of all records showing payment of all expenses, purchase of alcoholic beverages, purchase of food items, purchase of supplies against utilities, purchase of lease equipment, payment of employees' compensation, required holdings, payment of federal, state, local taxes, payment of rent, mortgage loans, and all our disbursements.
So basically, it was a paper type of account? His paperwork wasn't?
He kept actually no records on the, for the property establishment.
And he's now corrected that, is correct?
As of my, as of the completion of these charges, I had observed a As of my, as of the completion of these charges, I had observed a singular binder that appeared to have corrected some of these issues or many of these issues. I have not done a full inspection of the establishment in the previous license unit actually to determine if he has all of these items, in fact, has all of these items.
But it's not part of the disciplinary charges that are pending now?
Correct.
As to count seven, which you said non-vault. If you read for the council at count seven.
On or about May seventh, two thousand and fifteen, continue there after you allowed, permitted, or suffered a prohibited practice or promotion on your license premise to allow patrons in groups of certain size to bring their own liquor bottle for consumption on your license premise, violation of N J A C thirteen colon two dash twenty-three point six.
There's been no further violation of anything like that pending before the council?
That actually, I believe is, is correct.
So that, that item has been corrected. There's no second offenses pending on that?
I don't know.
Count eleven, excuse me, ten.
On December twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, due to the holdover retail license, failed to prominently post a warning notice prepared by the Department of Health in any service area as well as on a wall, towel, expense, or other appropriate location in a public restroom for female patrons on the license premise, proportionate alcohol consumption has been determined to be harmful to the penis and violation of N J S A thirty-three colon one dash twelve A.
No further violations of that section?
Yeah, I haven't performed a full inspection of the establishment, but to the best of my knowledge, no.
And none, none pending in this, in this act?
Yes.
And then the final one is twelve.
On June twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, you allowed, permitted, or suffered weakness or moral activity on your license premises specifically by a employee, waitstaff, Matiel Alario Aguilera, dressed in a form-fitting low-cut one-piece thongback singlet which exposed her products, will serve as patrons in violation of N J A C thirty-three colon two dash twenty-three point six and ten.
And there's been no additional violation of that section?
Not that I know of.
And none of that is pending here?
Correct.
So when we look at the charges pending, those are the only offenses that survive that stipulation, correct?
Correct.
So when you label any of these quote second offenses, it would technically not be because all of the previous violations, other than the four you just read, were dismissed, correct?
As far as I know, I've charged him with it previously, that's why I labeled it as a second offense.
So having charged him, but him not having been found guilty, you still label it a second offense, even though pursuant to an agreement, those items were dismissed?
I, yes, I label the second offense, yes.
So it would be unfair if they're not in any of those four to be second convictions or second admissions, correct?
I'm not an attorney, sir.
Let's go to the promotions. At the time of the agreement, was it the routine of Casmas to have DJs?
Yes.
And they had them regularly on certain nights of the week?
I want to clarify your question a little bit.
Okay, a DJ would play music for the entertainment of, of the patrons and that, and that that was not a once-in-awhile thing, but it was several nights a week?
Correct.
And that's the nature of the business that he conducted?
Yes.
So as he signed that agreement, that was his routine, correct?
Correct.
And if you read the words of the agreement, it says special promotion, correct?
Correct.
So that if he continued in his routine business, it wasn't special nor was it a promotion?
Objection. For purposes of the language, I think the language speaks for itself. I understand counsel's argument, but I know, and I know counsel wasn't, wasn't involved in negotiating this particular stipulation. But when we talk about special promotional events, we were talking about anything other than he operated the establishment as a liquor license establishment, serving alcohol to his patrons without having a DJ or a band or any type of special event. So we never established the norm as being a place that always has special events, therefore, any events that he has must be extra special in order to come within the purview of that special condition. So for the record, I just want to clarify that for Mr. Seega wasn't involved in that and I don't necessarily think that's a fair question for the officer, but.
Let's try to move quicker, please.
Was there any document that defined special or promotion? I think you, you had in your mind, it's a fair to say you had in your mind what it might be, but that someone of a reasonable mind might have a different.
What is his understanding of that?
I'm sorry, Dave, can you ask your question again, please?
You had a particular understanding of what special promotion meant, did you?
I get it, was special event or promotion. But yes.
And that a reasonable mind may have a different, as to what those words mean?
I think I have reasonable minds.
Well, nothing you don't, a reasonable mind.
Effectively, did you say that?
A reasonable mind.
Does one have a reasonable mind? I think, I think anybody of a reasonable mind would understand what an official promotion is. You've been, sir, counsel, you made your point.
Thank you.
Okay.
As to each of those, do you have the website it was taken from?
I think all of these come from Instagram.
Instagram, do you have a date that they were taken?
I, as I want to save it in my computer, I save it with the date that I found, or the date was, for the event.
Okay, do you have any sort of incident report or record that would reflect you investigated any one of the events?
There are several reports reflecting certain events in here specifically, yes.
Okay, but not each one?
No, not each one. I'm one person, I can't go to every single bar, it's a one.
So then, other than the few instances where there might have been a reason to go there, none, most of those were not investigated?
I would say there's a, a number of these that were, a number of them weren't.
I don't think I have anything for them.
Any witnesses on count four?
I was called Cupertino.
That's fine. Why don't you get up a minute and let Mr. Cupertino, unless he wants to testify from there, that's fine.
He can testify from there.
Okay, we've got to be sworn, though.
Stand up, please, sir, Mr. Cupertino. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the limited truth, so help you God. Thank you. Good to sit back down, sir. I said, you're very welcome.
But you didn't official, you didn't tell me you wanted to turn it down. We're going to go ahead. You didn't tell me you wanted. Have you seen this before, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Could you tell the council the nature of the operation of the business in the months prior to you entering the stipulation of settlement? How, what was that, how did you conduct business? Do you have, do you have DJs?
I have DJs.
Prior to the stipulation? Prior to entering the stipulation? And that is your signature, right? You signed on? Yeah, all right, so you were.
I have DJs.
And was it routine?
Yeah, it was routine.
What, what was the routine prior to entering that stipulation?
I have a DJ on weekends.
On weekends? What nights?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And that was the routine you, you, did you consider, when you entered that, did you discuss what a special promotion was?
My understa, my understanding was a special promotion was on the, yeah, I've been, senior, the band, and that's, that's, I thought that was a special.
Did you, did you regard a DJ that you had routinely as special promotion?
No, I don't know.
So it's true, you didn't then notify them of the routine you had? But did you notify them of when you did have some special? And what sorts of events did you, did you notify them of? What events did you?
Okay, like when I had this emphasis, this a bit senior, so I, I, I faxed this flyer to Mr. DeGraw, the number again, and also that my boy is, and that, the fact.
So in this period of time, it wasn't that you ignored faxing him things?
No.
It's just you did what you thought was promotional?
Yes, sir.
And you didn't what you didn't think was promotional?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia, were you open this week? Were you, was your bar open this week?
Yes, I opened.
Okay, what was the last night it was open? Last night?
The last night, I was open the last night.
Did you have a DJ last night?
But I, I, I faxed a flyer, the promotion to.
For last night's DJ.
I said, I, I've asked you two weeks, I said, this drive for each and, each and other, other Tuesday.
Okay.
And this is for each and other Thursday.
Okay.
Yes.
But that's my point, you, you sent it to the police department to advise them you were having a DJ, correct? So that's, that's no different than having a two-for-Tuesday with Wildboy at your, at your establishment? Is this considered a DJ? Look at this one. Is that a DJ or is that a band?
I never had this, I don't know if it would be.
How about the one above? Party on the twenty-third of December.
Yes, I have this.
Okay, did you notify the police as to that?
Well, it depends whether it's, what, before or then.
Well, that was December twenty-third, we entered into the stipulation.
In January.
In, in November, November nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen is the date. So that would have been covered, right? Okay, that's all right. So.
So did he notify, did he notify or he didn't?
He did. Okay, that's your testimony, right? How about December eleventh, you had Kellin Banda and DJ Seven. Was that something you would notify the police department about?
Yes.
And what, so you, you believe you would have notified them, do you know whether you did?
Send something, I faxed a flyer.
Yeah, did you send them a flyer about that one?
Yeah, and the employee list.
How about karaoke night?
I don't have karaoke.
You don't have karaoke?
No.
Okay, this says DJ Raffi Karaoke Night, round seven three two.
Yeah, he said, well, I don't know what happened, somebody put it on the, on the social media, but I don't have karaoke.
Anymore?
No.
Or did you ever have it?
I don't have, I don't have.
So someone just put something on social media that they were having karaoke at your establishment? So this was never true?
No, no, I don't have.
So currently you're sending notification pursuant to the stipulation every time you had a DJ or a band or a singer, correct?
After I spoke, I had Mr. Paul.
Right.
He has got a very idea for me and I just, hey, do this, because my understanding when I have Mr. Marchetta, like I said in the beginning, I told him, especially when only one, that being a singer or being bad. So that's why I, I would use to notify only when it could be like.
Mr. Marchetta never told you to notify the police department of every event that you had?
Like, like I said, when I be the, be bad.
Okay, I have no further questions for Mr. Garcia at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, want to go to count two?
Yeah, yeah, that's it, I have on this one.
All right, thank you, sir. Yeah, why don't you have a seat, Mr. DeGraw, Officer DeGraw? Let me direct your attention back to C one A. I want you to look at count number two. This particular count involves another violation of Title thirty-three and Title thirteen of the Administrative Code. Can you tell us what that one is?
Failure to file a notice to the Division of Alcohol Beverage Control in writing that you changed the floor plan or intended to change the floor plan.
Okay, is that, is that a regulation requirement of A B C that, that the floor plan has to stay consistent with what you had in your initial application to open a licensed establishment?
Yes.
Okay, did there come a point in time when you went into this establishment and saw that the floor plan changed?
Yes.
Let me show you what's been marked C three for identification. Tell us what that is, sir.
These are photos, I took dated March twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, of the interior of seven three two lounge with a floor plan that does not match the floor plan that is on file.
Okay, and how is it different, different, sir?
He's added these pub table height or possibly taller high-back chairs along the wall, changed some of the cosmetic stuff, the layout of the tables, position of the tables on the floor. This was something he had actually applied for and had not yet been approved, that he just wanted, had, didn't work for anyway.
Okay, and did you bring this to the attention of Mr. Garcia or some other principal of the licensee?
Yes, I did.
And what resulted when you told him?
I believe he stated to me that his attorney told him it would be okay to go ahead and just do that.
Without approval?
Yes.
Who is this attorney who told him that, do you know?
He indicated it was Mr. Marchetta at the time.
Okay, now, he's changing the floor plan without approval from the issuing authority a violation?
Yes.
Okay, and again, with respect to recommended penalties, you have a three-day suspension here listed.
Correct.
And you have second offense. So to Mr. Seega's point, second offense may refer to an offense that occurred prior to the stipulation of settlement that he was referring to back from November?
Correct.
Okay, but what is your understanding as to the operation of the regulation to begin with? Is every day that the floor plan is changed a, a separate and continuing violation?
Yes, each time that the floor plan remains changed from the initial title that I've heard it would be, it's still be considered an offense of, so in this case, you'd have three days to spend for each day that it's been open since we observed Mr. Marchetta.
Okay, to your knowledge, has the floor plan been approved by the city representatives at this point in time?
To the best of my mind, my knowledge, no.
So it's a continuing violation that continues to exist as we sit here today?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions for Detective DeGraw on count two.
Thank you, counsel.
The change of floor plan would have been filed with the city clerk, correct?
Correct.
And that would have accompanied the architectural rendering or floor plan rendering? Then it would have been distributed to the various city offices?
Correct.
So we know at the time of this violation that an application had been filed?
Correct.
It had architectural plans?
Yes.
It was being reviewed by city agencies?
Correct.
It would, it would have gone to the attorney, it would have gone to Mr. Patterson and Zoney, it went to yourself?
Yes, sir.
It just was never approved?
Correct.
I have no further questions.
I have no follow-up, no redirect. We'll submit on count two. Do you have any witnesses on count?
Just one brief, Mr. Cooper.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Cupertino.
Mr. Cupertino, it's my understanding at some point you decided to change the floor plan, correct?
Yes.
And in that, did you engage an attorney to help you?
I asked him, I had my last special, that last, I'm in January, and I asked my lawyer what could I do by that time, and he said, oh, you can fix your place and do, make, make a, get a proponent on gym, and I be to me and I submit to the city and see, by the meantime, you can start fixing, do what you want to do, what you show me, the floor plan.
So at that point, you had an attorney, correct?
Yes, sir.
You paid for an architect?
Yes.
And they did a rendering? And you filed appropriate papers with the city?
Yes, yes, my, my lawyer did.
And then you were under the mistaken belief that while you were closed, that you'd have the opportunity to do the correction? But it's true that you never did get the final approval, correct?
So what he's saying is that he, he had an attorney, he advised him how to, how to go about it, and he did all the proper paperwork and submitted it, it was never approved?
Yes, so in that sense, we're conceding that that floor plan that currently exists, that was built and it was not approved. But it wasn't that he did it again toward perhaps the penalty, he didn't do it without the, at least initiating the steps to do it the right way.
Thank you.
Detective DeGraw, let me direct your attention now to count three. On October first, two thousand and fifteen, you had occasion to conduct an inspection or to arrive at the licensed establishment?
I did.
Okay, let me show you if it's been marked C four for identification. Take a look at this report. If you give us the details noted to the results of your investigation on that particular day as they relate to count number four.
Three, I'm sorry. In this particular day, I had observed a social media event posted, pretty established for an eighteen party, twenty-one to drink event. That's a violation of city ordinance. There's also a method we'd not been notified of. I, I worked that night, went there with some patrol officers. Went there with some patrol officers just to speak to the owner, see if there was any event, check some ideas if necessary. Ultimately, I spoke to Mr. Garcia. He stated that the event was being run by a promoter. He knows only of Gates. I asked to see his employee list. It had not changed at all since the most recent time I viewed it prior to that.
So just to.
There was no DJs on it. There was no, no new DJs.
Everybody that was there that wasn't on the original was, was not on the new list or not?
Correct. There was no new employee list or updated employees.
Thank you.
Is that a violation of that particular regulation?
Yes, sir.
I have no questions.
No questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move to count four. Let me direct your attention to count, count four, detective. On March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, did you have occasion to become aware of conditions in and about the licensed premises that were a violation of that particular section? And let me show you what's been marked C six for identification.
Sir.
Okay, tell us about that event.
That evening, we had gone to the establishment, see with the owner about, I believe it was the, the.
Do you need to look through the report to refresh your recollection? Please do so.
All right, we were, myself and my partner were working that evening doing random compliance checks at various liquor license establishments throughout the city. We stopped at seven-three-two lounge. Ultimately, in the course of that, we ended up arresting and affording the establishment for various narcotics offenses. And in the course of doing that, observed the, asked to see the employee list and this individual is not in fact on the employee list.
So that is the nature of count number three with respect to the employee list?
Count number four, yes.
So I'm sorry.
Don't go backward, Mr. Shane.
I'm sorry. With respect to that individual, what was the individual's name?
Nigel Dillon.
Okay.
And I just want to ask a question. You just said he was an employee of the establishment?
Oh, yeah, he was a DJ for the night.
Thank you.
That's how it works, detective. Once you're working here as a DJ, you're considered an employee of the establishment, therefore you have to be listed on the employee list, correct?
Yes, sir.
Did that particular visit to that establishment on that occasion result in additional charges against this particular licensee? And specifically, I referenced count number five?
Yes, sir, it did.
Tell us about that.
Through the course of my investigation into Mr. Dillon, it was determined he had a criminal history, which makes him a disqualified person to be employed by a liquor license establishment.
Okay, and that is a violation as well of Title thirty-three and JAC thirteen colon two dash fourteen point five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I also want to direct your attention. Was that individual charged with a criminal offense?
Yes, he was.
With some type of CBS violation?
Possession of CBS, possession of CBS, intent to distribute, possession of CBS, intent to distribute a school loan, and possession of CBS, intent to distribute within a public park.
Just tell everybody what the, the missing CBS gang stands for.
Controlled dangerous substance.
Directing your attention to counts twenty-one and twenty-two, counsel would like this, because we address those at this time since they relate to that incident.
Yes.
Did they, did that, those?
Perfect.
Those particular charges against this individual with the discovery of a controlled dangerous substance caused this particular licensee to be in violation of any additional regulations? And if so, please articulate those for us as they're set forth in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
The answer to that question is yes, it did. Charge twenty-one was allowing, permitting or suffering upon the license premise on lawful activity pertaining to a controlled dangerous substance. And count twenty-two is suffering, allowed, permitting or suffering upon license presence on lawful activity pertaining to a controlled dangerous substance, as in clause one of your claims.
And this Mr. Dillon, Nigel Dillon, was considered an employee, correct?
Correct.
Is it true, detective, that a licensee takes responsibility for an employee in and about the license premises that is involved in illegal activity even if he or she or it doesn't know that they're involved in illegal activity?
Yes.
It's a strict liability standard, isn't it, sir?
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have with respect to counts four, five, twenty-one, twenty-two.
As to each of those counts, all of them arise as a result of this Mr. Nigel Dillon being an employee, correct?
Not necessarily, no.
Well, you said he wasn't on the employee list, so if he's, if he's an employee, he has to be on there. If he's not an employee, he doesn't have to be on there, correct?
Correct. Count twenty-two is just the, the suffering of, or allowing, permitting or suffering upon presence on lawful activity pertaining to a controlled dangerous substance.
So that one. But the other three then require Mr. Nigel Dillon to have been an employee?
Correct.
And what is the definition that you employed to determine that he was an employee?
Mr. Dillon stated to me that he was the DJ, which tells me he is an employee of the establishment, is working for the establishment, is benefiting from being at the establishment.
It, so you're taking, was, was he high at the time?
I'm sorry?
Was he high at the time?
I'm not in recognition, I'm just trying to determine if he was high at the time.
There were other people present at the time?
My partner and Mr. Dillon's assistant.
And there were there other employees at the bar at the time?
Mr. Garcia and maybe one or two other persons.
I have no further questions.
No redirect. That's all I have on those counts. Do you have any?
I do.
Is a witness on which count, counsel?
It's, it's on all counts related to Mr. Nigel Dillon.
Ma'am, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and what the truth is on you got?
Yes.
Can I get your name and address, please?
Paylon Graham, four-four-seven X Street.
Could you spell your last name for the record, please, for everyone?
M R E L.
Thank you. You have a seat, please.
Could you tell the counsel by whom you're employed and in what capacity?
I'm a bartender for seven-three-two lounge.
I'm just going to focus your attention on this Mr. Nigel Dillon. Do you know who he is?
Not really, but he's just a guy that will go there and fix the wires.
Did, did he ever work for Mr. Garcia?
No.
Did Mr. Garcia direct that he do anything or employ him, pay him anything?
No.
Well, then how did he come to connect wires?
Well, the problem is that we basically worked for the DJ to come and arrive. So sometimes he would go there and fix how the wires are, kind of messed up.
So he would fix wires for the DJ, correct?
Correct.
But he wouldn't necessarily touch, he wasn't under the direction control of, control of Mr. Garcia?
Correct.
Were you there the night of the twenty-second, March twenty-second, when he was arrested?
Yes.
Were you aware that he had any drugs on him?
No.
You didn't smell anything? You didn't suspect anything?
No.
Were you surprised when he was arrested?
I was.
And to your mind, that evening, was he there as a patron or was he there in any other capacity? No, I mean, was he, was he there helping the DJ?
Basically, yeah. That's where I saw.
But he wasn't there at the request of Mr. Garcia? I have nothing further.
Ma'am, was the DJ there at the request of Mr. Garcia?
He did not arrive.
Okay. Well, how did this Mr. Nigel end up arriving? The DJ didn't arrive?
I'm sorry?
Why did Mr. Nigel arrive and the DJ did not arrive?
Well, basically, from my knowledge, he did arrive as just a bartender. And actually, me and my friend, we were actually putting a song. And as soon as he arrived, we told him to see if he could do anything so we could do some song.
Okay. But did the DJ ask him to arrive to help the DJ?
Well, from my understanding, I cannot, I cannot explain that to you because I'm just a bartender.
Okay, I understand. But you gave us a lot of information for being just a bartender, that's why I asked you to be real to that question. How about this individual? Had he ever been in the bar before on any other occasion to your knowledge?
No.
How about since the incident? Has he ever been there?
No.
No? And does Mr. Garcia know this individual?
I don't think so. From my knowledge, I cannot, I cannot tell you exactly. I'm just, I'm just a worker there.
I understand. But Mr. Garcia then allowed somebody he doesn't know to come in and start messing with his wires to hook up a DJ group?
From my knowledge, like I said, maybe. I cannot tell you exactly. I'm just a bartender, just go work.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
No problem.
Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia, do you know who Nigel Dillon is?
No, I don't know. He came with the other guy.
Who was the other guy?
There's Michael B. Rosanna, B A E T O, who's that name? And that's why, and I, I know, so I know he's going to hook up the system, but that's something. And I was when obviously the girl came in, I was in my story room when they came and I said that.
So you, did you, did you employ, did you hire Mr. Dillon? Had you ever before hired Mr. Dillon? Had you ever hired him since? So in your mind, why was he there?
To hook up the system.
But for, for the DJ you were hiring? So you had no control over him? You didn't direct when he did that?
No.
No?
The other, the other person I came with, from my knowledge, he know how to connect the wire for DJ, so that's why he's my partner.
So other than that, you had no business relationship with him? Did you know he was high that night?
No.
Did you know he had drugs on him that night?
No, like I said, I wasn't in the storage room when he was, the DJ hooked him.
So you didn't in any way allow or permit drugs in your, in your bar? You have nothing further?
Mr. Garcia, I just have a question or two. Prior to that particular date, you never saw this man before in your establishment?
No.
How about since then? Has he ever been back?
No.
You sure?
Since then.
Since then?
Ever, ever since?
No.
He's never been back? After you've been arrested, he's never been back into your bar?
No.
And how about the DJ that was there with him that night? Have you used that DJ since then?
I don't understand what.
The same DJ that was with this gentleman that particular evening when he got arrested with the drugs? Was that DJ ever back to your establishment?
The DJ I use on Tuesday.
You use him on Tuesdays?
Yes.
Every Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
No, the DJ.
The DJ that was on the twenty-second of March, what was his name? Do you remember?
Oh, Kaboom. Godey Kaboom.
Kaboom. Has, has since, the question is since this Nigel Dillon was arrested, has DJ Kaboom come back?
Have you used him?
You do use him?
Yes, yes, I've used him.
On Tuesday nights?
On Tuesday night, Thursday night.
On Thursday nights?
Yes.
Okay.
But has Nigel Dillon ever come back to assist him?
No.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
All right, detective. I want to direct your attention to count number twelve of the complaint. On this particular count, did you become aware of an incident that occurred at the licensed establishment back on November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen?
Yes.
Let me show you in exhibit mark C ten, identification. Now, as part of your duties and responsibilities as ABC Special Investigations Officer, you're made aware of all incidents that occur at liquor licensed establishments throughout the city of Brunswick, correct?
Correct.
And in fact, officers who have responded to calls for service at particular establishments advise you with a report or a memo that a particular problem was at a licensed establishment and that a particular charge may have been issued against the licensed establishment if you weren't physically there?
Correct.
Okay. Tell us about November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. Or did you become aware of an incident that occurred there regarding a patron?
Yes, sir. May I reference my report?
Sure.
This was a report that was brought to my attention regarding a, at first I indicated they were employees of the establishment in the capacity of a DJ, was leaving at closing hour and was caught urinating on the home next door to the bar on High Street.
Is this the type of quality of life issue that's brought to your attention as the ABC enforcement officer from time to time regarding licensed establishments?
This is one of the complaints I do hear, yes.
And with respect to your ABC duties and responsibilities, and I guess this goes into count number thirteen, the conduct of a licensed establishment is reviewed by yourself on a quarterly basis to ensure that the operation of the licensed establishment doesn't have a negative impact upon the neighborhood in which it exists, correct?
Correct.
And in connection with that review, you review calls for service and things of that nature?
Correct.
Okay, and a lot of those calls to service are for maybe music or noise or disturbances, which are considered quality of life issues?
Correct.
Okay. Tell us about your review that gives rise to count number thirteen. You have a period of time in there, and I want to direct your attention, if you will, really the calendar year, count this, this particular license year.
Count number thirteen looked at July first, two thousand fifteen, through March third, two thousand sixteen. The establishment was a source of sixty-three calls for police service, ranging everything from quality of life violations to violent altercations.
And this is a synopsis, if you will, of not only the specific complaints in the police reports that we're looking at today, perhaps calls for service that didn't result in a report that you reviewed?
Correct. Not every time the police get called will arise to necessitate a police report. But many times you will see a dispatcher's entry to the period, dispatches them indicating an officer was sent for a reason, be it a noise complaint, a fight.
And does the New Jersey Administrative Code prohibit a licensed establishment to operate in what could be deemed as a nuisance in that particular neighborhood?
It does.
Okay. And is that the nature of this particular count, number thirteen, that you established here?
Yes, sir.
Now, let me direct your attention to count number sixteen. Now, I want to provide you.
Can I just, I have one witness here on count twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So if you can just give them in and out.
No, no, no problem. Go ahead.
Sir, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and what the truth is on you got?
That's fine.
Your name and address, please?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Thank you. Your address?
DJ Patron.
Your address?
Address, Orwell Coats Road.
You're DJ Patron?
Yeah.
Count twelve of the accusation against Mr. Garcia's establishment indicates that you were arrested for urinating on the house next door. You are DJ Patron, right?
Yep.
On November twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. An issue of summons and then subsequently arrested for outstanding warrants. Did that ever happen?
I've never been arrested in my life.
So you never got a summons and you were never arrested on warrants?
Never.
And you're DJ Patron?
Yep.
Thank you.
Did you have an opportunity, sir, to look at the police report that was generated in this matter? Let me show you to you. It's in front of you over here. I, I have no questions on this witness anyway, that's fine.
I have nothing further.
Detective DeGraw, let me, uh, direct your attention to count number sixteen. I know we're going to have some specifics from officers as well, um, but in connection with your position in Special Investigations ABC, uh, have you become aware of several incidents involving altercations, fights, uh, arguing, et cetera, going on, um, outside these particular licensed premises?
Yes, sir.
And, um, you testified very early on that this establishment is primarily located in a residential neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
And, um, as a result of those types of activities, does the police department, uh, get calls, uh, from residents who complain about the noise and the altercations, et cetera?
Yes.
With respect to, uh, count number sixteen, take a look at that particular count, and I want you just to articulate for me, if you would, is there a specific ABC regulation that prescribes that licensed establishments aren't supposed to, um, allow patrons to engage in brawls or violence, um, et cetera?
Yes.
And, um, in connection with your experience and your training as a ABC officer, um, is it true that a licensed establishment is not only responsible for the conduct of its patrons inside the premises, but outside the premises when they leave the premises, uh, from a particular evening, let's say?
Yes.
And you've heard the term "in and about the licensed premises" before?
Yes, I have.
Okay, in, in connection with your training as an ABC officer, uh, in your review of the regulations and statutes, does that mean that a licensee has an obligation to control conduct of people outside the licensed establishment, maybe leaving the establishment, going to their car on the sidewalk, et cetera?
Yes, it does.
So then, is it fair to say that a license owner can't just push someone out onto the street and shut the door, and, and therefore not be responsible for the conduct that may occur?
Correct.
I don't think I have any more, um, testimony to be elicited from, maybe Mr. Seika has some cross for him at this point.
Just regarding, uh, thirteen, count number thirteen? That thirteen, basically, you're, you're assessing a violation for s- sixty-three calls to the establishment, and you're declaring it a nuisance based on that number, correct? Okay, but you provided no information with the specifics of any of those sixty-three calls?
Uh, there was a, provided with the charges that I originally drew up, there would have been a cadence that would have indicated what each of those calls for service were, and they ranged, et cetera, from disorderly conduct about all the patients, I believe it was a shot bar call.
Yeah, that, that'll be one of the things, but, I mean, to aggregate them as sixty-three, and to not provide the council with specifics to each of the sixty-three, is a little.
The cadence is a, the, 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 right.
No, unfortunately, I, I haven't seen it. So, I, I, it's, it's a statistical analysis that you're claiming to be, without, without the specific information.
It's, it's drawn from the police department's computer aided dispatch system, it's factual, the dispatcher en- enters a case, a call, based on the, the type of call that they receive, they enter it into the computer system, and stores that record, that's what I utilize to, you know, my tablet will use, um, that's the officers utilize to, basically conduct their, their evening's business.
I gue- I guess my problem is to broad brush them as quality of life without specifics, it's difficult for this council to assess the value that.
Many of them have police reports associated with them that.
Right, sir.
I know.
Mr. Seika's objection to that is noted, however, I think I preface my question to the detective, uh, with those particular police reports and incidents that we talk about, and that we will be talking about, and have been talking about this evening, um, and the officers that will testify, um, amount to a nuisance, and therefore that is the nature of the charge. Perhaps all sixty-three calls for service aren't, aren't documented with reports, um, but statistically, um, I thought that was relevant for purposes of that particular charge. Do you have any witnesses on these particular charges, or anything that we've covered so far?
No.
Mr. Egan, members of council, I am done with Detective DeGraw, at this point, um, I think he's covered what I need him to cover. I have, um, four other officers who are coming, fortunately, I don't see them here yet, we have two other hearings that we can roll right into, on Metier and Degala, um, which I would suggest that we do now, and then, by then, I think we'd be ready to proceed with, um, the rest of this case.
Okay, thank you, great. Side bar? Fail. All right. All right, so we're going to do the continuation, termination of conditions on the ABC license for First Series Incorporated, trading as Metier Bar, liquor license number one two one four thirty-three zero four seven zero zero five. Are all parties present? Your house owner?
Yes.
The licensee is present, uh, George Keston appeared on his. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Counsel President, just for purp- Miss Egan is going to present this particular matter while with Detective DeGraw, but for purposes of, uh, the record and the benefit of the council, I just want, I know Miss Egan probably knew this, but since I'm prepared, I just want to put on the record, um, that this particular license, um, was renewed with special conditions last year, and I wanted to read the special conditions into the record.
This time.
We're going to be doing Metier, is it Mr. Degal or Metier?
Which twin, do you want to start, Mr. DeGraw?
Which one do you call first?
Metier.
Okay, with respect to these special conditions, um, that were placed during this past license year, the licensee shall hire uniformed police officers from the city of New Brunswick, uh, or from outside municipalities, to maintain security on or about the licensed premises, while the premises are open for business during the hours of nine P.M. to closing on Friday and Saturday. Licensee shall also furnish monthly written reports of names and addresses of such individuals so employed to the New Brunswick Police Department Special Investigations. Licensee shall maintain order on and within the licensed premises, licensee shall, uh, police the sidewalk adjoining the licensed premises each day that the premises is open for business. Four, licensee shall not alter the layout of the premises as shown in the sketch previously filed with the city clerk without further resolution of council. Licensee shall continue the use of existing video cameras, and annotate all film for time and date, and shall maintain said tapes for at least thirty days. And lastly, licensee shall be in compliance with ordinance O-dash O-two-nine-six-six-oh-nine as amended relative to educational requirements for owners and managers. Having said that, I'll turn it over to Miss Egan, uh, who I believe will want to call Detective DeGraw regarding his tavern report. This, for the record, also, this particular hearing has been, uh, published with respect to notification, any residents who want to come out and voice their opinion.
Thank you. Egan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shannon. Counselor President, I'd like to call Detective Brian DeGraw.
Detective, we're going to do it the same way we did before, and, uh, you've been sworn in already, so you're all good.
Thanks, sir.
Detective DeGraw, for purposes of this hearing, would you state the address of the licensed premises?
Fourteen Jersey Avenue.
And, uh, who do you know to be the owner of those premises?
Mr. Perry Seven Kilmar.
All right. You've heard, uh, Mr. Shannon, state the special conditions for the licensed premises, are those the special conditions that you know to con- uh, currently be in place?
They are currently under appeal, uh, the state, Division of the ABC State, the condition that was put in place at the time of the renewal last year, currently all required in lieu of, uh, new public police officers and a uniformed security guard.
In fact, we are presently in these, um, administrative hearing on those special conditions right now, is that correct?
Correct.
And we're set to go back in August to continue those hearings?
Correct.
Uh, have you, uh, prepared and reviewed tavern reports for the prior license year?
I have.
And, um, have you provided those to me as well?
Yes, I have.
Do you have them with you today?
Yes.
Uh, would you please, uh, just, uh, give a summary for the council of the past incidents for the licensed, uh, premises, over the, for the last, uh, license year?
I would object to that, the, whatever happened in the last license year is the subject of the appeal, and I think it's inappropriate to be discussing it here again. We had a hearing over that, it's before the ABC, we're in the middle of the trial, and there, and we should be continuing with what occurred during this past license year, that's where we should be starting, I we, I think it's unfair to be rehashing the past.
No, that's, I find, talk about the present license year, please.
All right, so, for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen license year, uh, the establishment was a source of forty-six calls for service, uh, twenty-seven of those related to disturbances or disorderly persons. Uh, there were no noise complaints from the establishment in the previous license year, the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen license year. The complaints and general, uh, interviews I get from officers of the people that come by to tell me about their experiences with the various establishments.
I would also object to any testimony if it's general like that, if he's got specific reports, he can make them, but if he's going to say, I talked to so-and-so, this is what he told me, I think that that is unfair to be doing in this hearing, I think we're past that.
We got it, counsel, if they're not hearing the same, whether you may agree what you're saying, just speak on your, on what you know about the, how the charges are viewed, you know, so.
Again, I, I perform my tavern report, I fully, the, use the police department's computer aided dispatch system to review the calls for service in the, the license year, in this case, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, uh, quoting the numbers that I observed, and as, uh, as the report says, uh, uh, there are reports that are generated in association with those numbers, uh, they range, uh, various types of incidents, uh, some of them are directly related to the establishment, the establishment is located at a busy intersection, uh, there are many times that there are incidents that get attributed to that address, but are not necessarily directly, uh, associated with the operation of the establishment.
Detective DeGraw, isn't it, uh, true that there were a couple of incidents where you were actually called to the establishment?
I did have, uh, opportunities to go to that establishment, I would talk to it, of course, in the license year.
I want to draw your attention to the incident of April eleventh, two thousand fifteen, uh, where you called to the establishment on that evening?
I believe it was, yes.
Do you recall?
Again, that's the prior license year.
Were you called for the present license year at all, do you recall?
Yes.
And can you tell the council, uh, what the date was, if you can recall?
I, I can't recall, I don't have any specific reports in front of me.
All right. Do you have the CAD report, Ricky?
I have the tavern report with me, it's just I didn't bring it to the date, would I interrupt you?
No, absolutely. Again, Detective, let's just focus on this, this tavern year, please.
For the record, the tavern report, it would be impossible for me to compile the, all the information and get the report out to you in a timely manner if I try to produce it the night of June thirtieth, when the license expires, so I review, uh, April first through March thirty-first, so when we look in this tavern report, and we look at what we consider, as we move into renewals, there is some overlap in the actual license year, but that has to occur in order to actually accurately do an image of the establishment. Okay, Miss Egan, I apologize.
Take your time.
So in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen license year, barring events prior that were considered for the tavern report over prior to the renewal, uh, yes, there were times that I was called to the establishment where I happened to, uh, have opportunity to be at the establishment related to my forceful duties as an ABC officer.
And what were those dates?
Uh, specifically, I'm looking at October twenty-third, two thousand fifteen.
Can you relate to the council the fact that you were called?
Just going to review my report. Okay, on that date, there was a uniformed security guard employed by the establishment on the weekend, per the agreement. At that time, we'd stopped, uh, again, we do random, we'll work at night, you do random spot inspections of, uh, our liquor licensed establishments, it also gives us the ability to keep an open mind and communications with our liquor, liquor licensed owners, uh, we're not solely about enforcement, mostly it's about compliance to the law. Uh, on this date, we happened to stop at Metier, you could hear loud news again made from the establishment, a violation of city ordinance, uh, while we were outside, I observed the security guard that was, had been hired by the establishment to be asleep inside of his vehicle. I ultimately contacted the management of the, uh, the establishment, she stepped, she had to step outside, it was far too loud inside to speak to her inside the establishment, um, it took some time of us knocking on the windows and, uh, turning, illuminating her flashlights in the inside of his car on his face to try to wake him up, uh, before he finally got up, everybody had a good chuckle, no one really seemed concerned with the fact that the security guard there paying was sound asleep outside.
And was there anyone else called to the, uh, establishment with you?
Um, at that night, I was assigned with Detective DeBonus, we were working, uh, playing close together in our mark car, uh, as ABC enforcement officers.
Do you recall if the owner was present?
I don't recall the owner being present, it was the manager of the establishment.
And who is the manager?
Uh, Kala Rajandrich.
Okay, and was she one of the ones who thought it was funny?
Yes.
Then directing your attention to the next incident where you were present.
Do you have a specific date?
Specific date, um, October twenty-third?
That was October twenty-third.
Was that October twenty-third? Is that the only one where you were present during the present license year?
Correct, there were several, there was, uh, incident prior to the June thirty renewal, but.
Do you have a report for October second?
What do you have, or do you want a second? I have a second.
Yeah, top of the second was not his report, it was Officer Travish's.
Could you provide a summary, um, of the calls to the, uh, to the establishment, did you not, in your tavern report?
I did.
And what was that summary?
Uh, it's summary included forty-six calls for service, twenty-seven of those called related to disturbances or disorderly persons complaints, and zero noise complaints, and included complaints of heavily intoxicated patrons, littering, disturbances, property damages, public irritation, um, there was some, uh, review from members of the Esperanza Neighborhood Project, uh, voiced complaints here before council last year, um, regarding the establishment concerning safety in the neighborhood while the establishment was in operation.
Isn't it true that not all of the, uh, calls for service are, uh, result in a police report, correct?
Correct, uh, as I stated earlier, uh, regarding the other period, um, many times, police officers can handle a, a situation just by speaking to the parties involved, uh, or there's, there's many, many, various form of recourse, an officer may, uh, may take, and it doesn't necessarily cause an incident to rise to the, the level which would require a police report to be written, so many times. So many times, you will see in a CAD list, a number of calls for service, but there may only be four, five, six actual reports written regarding, you know, the matters that were listed in the CAD. Many times, an officer can satisfy that call for service without having to rise to the level of documenting it in an actual police report.
Is there a certain criteria for what becomes a report and what doesn't generate a report?
Many times, it rises to officers' discretion. There are certain incidences that do require, absolutely require reports, but many times, it's up to the discretion of the officer as to how they're going to document their actions.
Based on your investigation and your review, are you recommending that the special conditions continue?
Absolutely. Anytime you can put a police officer on the doorstep of any place, it will reduce crime and quality of life violations that occur around that location.
Do you believe that the extra-duty police officer is necessary as opposed to a private security company?
Yes, particularly based on the fact that the private security company is asleep. At least in that incident, again, I can't be at the establishment every single night, but I can only imagine that that's probably a non-leopard habit.
I have nothing further.
Officer DeGraw, how many licenses are there in the city of Brunswick?
Approximately 80.
And so tell me, how many of them have licensed police officers on duty hours as security?
There are, there are three, including Metiera. Metiera obviously having been appealed to state.
Okay. So are the three involved Latin bars?
I don't know what your definition of a Latin bar is.
Where the clientele is basically Latin.
I don't particularly pay attention to who the clientele is.
So what did you pay attention to? You saw a man sleeping there, right? But is that a violation of a security person sleeping?
Just maybe noting the fact that they're required higher screener, and he's obviously asleep, so he's not able to do his job.
You were reciting from your sheet in the, in your tavern report, correct? And you said in yours, there was 46 calls for service.
Correct.
Is there any document that you have that says that those 46 calls for service had to do specifically with Metiera, other than 14 Jersey Avenue being used as a point of reference? Yes or no?
Yes, I use the CAD list.
Pardon?
Yes, the CAD list would indicate the address to 14 Jersey Avenue, which is Metiera, and that's what it did, that's where I get the price of all my numbers.
Okay, so does that tell you that any call there that you have listed on the CAD list was substantiated as related to Metiera?
It will not necessarily mitigate that.
Not only, not necessarily, it does not. Isn't that correct?
Again, it's just a list of all the incidents related to the establishment.
It's a list of all the calls of alleged incidents that occurred, correct?
Correct.
So are you able to testify to any of the 46 calls with specificity that say that because there were 46 calls, they were related, and so he should have an off-duty cop for those hours that generate 600 and some dollars in fees, because you cannot have a police officer for the buzzer unless you have it for four hours?
I do not look at solely the CAD list to make a determination on that. I look at the totality of circumstances based on information that I receive from officers that are employed by the police department regarding various establishments throughout account. Police reports that are associated.
You have what you read from, correct?
Correct.
Then you went on to say, "Of those calls, 27 were related to disturbances or disorderly persons complaints."
Correct.
No way do you say that they were related specifically to Metiera.
Again, I'm looking at a CAD list, it's a very basic volume of information.
So you're generalizing from that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, then, on top of it, then you said, "While many of the aforementioned calls and complaints are associated with the busy intersection, interviews with officers and supervisors of the police department made it clear that a considerable percentage of the issues are directly related to the establishment." So tell us how you leaped from 46, 27, to many of those complaints emanating from the establishment. Do you have reports of superior officers?
Again, not everything is at the level where it's documented on paper. There are many times where officers of the department, understanding that my duties assigned as an ABC officer are related to this, will come to me and provide me with information about increased perceived call volume, you know, generic hits in the neighborhood. Hey, you know, Officer Detective DeGraw, there is a lot of fighting going on out there. People with public urination, there's always people passing out in front of the place. We have a call for individuals.
Officer DeGraw, I'm going to show you some pictures of that intersection in that area. And I'm also going to give you a survey to show you how large that property is. May I approach the council and give you?
Yes, sir. She can add something. Mr. Gussis, tell us what you're providing us, please.
What you're, what you're being provided with are colored pictures of Metiera Bar, the whole intersection, and French Street immediately surrounded. You're also being provided with a copy of survey that shows you Metiera's property is 45 by 100, and is built right on the line. Now, Officer, do you know what the capacity is that's permitted at Metiera?
Oh, the capacity.
Don't you think that's important for you to know?
With any liquor license served, it'd be hard to memorize each of them.
But, but you don't bring all of them up on charges, do you?
I have charged Metiera here.
You, what are we here for? We're here charging them with conduct that necessitates conditions on their license. Isn't that a charge?
There's no actual charging somebody's license at the time.
There's, there's nothing, in other words, you said?
I haven't signed a complaint against this liquor license.
You said that the reason you're here for conditions are determining that a police officer be put there is because littering, disturbances, property damage, public urination, heavily intoxicated persons are around you. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so now, Metiera, now look at the pictures that are in front of you. Okay, now, you look at the intersection, across the street from it, isn't there a park?
Much more where you're referring to.
So why don't you look through them all, that I have numbered the pages. It says park additionally across, diagonally across from Metiera.
Okay, yeah, I'm familiar with the park, the area.
Okay, so isn't that where people congregate and urinate and litter?
There's, again, it's a big intersection. There's a park, there's businesses, there's homes. Those complaints come from more than just the park.
Okay, and you also said that there were no, there was no parking, and that was a problem in that area too, correct?
Correct.
Okay, other than the Walgreens that's there, is there any parking left there for all the people that are in that area and have businesses?
No.
Have you ever seen anyone litter that came out of Metiera?
I don't recall.
Have you ever seen anybody urinate that came out of Metiera?
Over my career, I'm sure at some point, but I recall.
Well, let's talk about your career. How long, how long have you been on the police department?
Seven years.
And how many of those years have you been involved as the ABC officer?
Two.
Two. Okay, so your experience is based on those two years?
I'm sorry?
Your experience is based on those two years?
I'm sorry, why say my experience? It'd be my seven-year career as a law enforcement officer.
So that as an ABC officer, you've only been involved for two years?
I have only been assigned to the special investigation unit for two years.
But special investigations includes investigating the bars, correct?
Correct. However, I went to ABC school as a patrol officer and had the circumstances to assist special investigations as a patrol officer for my capacity of patrol duties, and assisting in performing inspections of things of that nature.
ABC school was what, one day?
No, it was, no, it was the introductory class, I believe, was two-day, and the, I don't recall the advanced classes, several days.
And so with you, with regard to the tavern report where you put this, can you specifically say that any of these violations were because of patrons at Metiera?
I can't say I have personal knowledge of the past year of these violations. It comes from, again, the totality of my investigation, speaking to other officers, complaints in the public, police reports are generated to it.
I'm asking you with specificity, not because you tell us about, oh, you think Metiera is a problem? Oh, yeah, it is, right. I'm not interested in testimony, but this is a very serious thing that you have done to say that, that a police officer should be there assigned with the rates that the city of Brunswick ordinance allows.
You have to, yeah, you need to, you guys need to testify. If he had a question, he should.
I would love for Officer DeGraw to testify.
Well, I would love for you to ask him a question.
Well, I did, but he apparently cannot, you, you called this hearing, the city called this hearing, and he cannot relay any of these charges specifically to this bar.
With all due respect, Mr. Gussis, this is a hearing, and you are to ask him a question, not to make your own comment or put on your case with your testimony.
Can you tell me if you have any reports with these specific incidents that you're charging here that you can testify to?
That I can testify to? I personally have not written any reports about any of these.
Do you have any witnesses here that can testify to any of these incidents?
I have not called any witnesses.
Okay. Now, I have no further questions, okay?
Nothing further, Mr. Officer DeGraw.
Thank you, Officer.
Does the council have any questions of what you've been brought before you? No, I just wanted to know because there's some community members.
No, no, we're gonna, Mr. Gussis will put on his case, and then after he's done, we'll let him have his questions, and then we'll open it up to the public. Do you have anybody else you want to call?
No.
Officer, Mr. Gussis?
Are the members of the public going to speak before I make a statement?
No, we're gonna have you go first.
Okay. My statement is this. Mr. Sutukumar, the owner of Metiera, has owned this since 1995. His CO is for 82 persons. He rarely gets 50 in there. This is an intersection, as you can see from the pictures, where people congregate. There's, and there's no place, his front, you can see from the survey, is only 25 feet. You can see Walgreens has a sign, "No loitering." You can see the park across the street where they're loitering. I think it's really punitive that you should consider insisting that a police officer be assigned there, an off-duty new buzzer or a special assignment new buzzer police officer, at a great cost to my client. He pays for a security company to come in and provide the security service. He has done that for years, without question. One of the reasons why the ABC granted a stay in this case is because all these years, there's been nothing that's changed that would require the security to change to a police officer. And that's why the stay was not lifted when the city made an application. So all I can tell you is that if you're, if you're not going to look at the quality of the evidence and the testimony that was before you, to impose this restriction on my client in a fair way to the licensee, then the only thing that we do is we keep going back to the administrative law division. I happen to also be a taxpayer in Brunswick, and I tell you frankly, I'm fooled to some of the waste of legal fees that my client has to expend on me, and the city has to expend on his gain, to prosecute these things where, to defend these things where the evidence is of this quality. So I ask you respectfully to consider carefully before you make your decision. And you do it based on what you heard.
Thank you, counsel. Anybody from the public? Yes.
Mr. Gussis? Do you have one time, then, that the security guard was asleep?
Pardon?
The one time the security guard was asleep?
Yes.
Did that, did that happen?
That did happen, and my client spoke with the security company, that person is no longer working for the company. And he's not aware of any other incidents where that occurred.
So is your client having the security company still come when the police come?
No, because, no, there's a stay, the police are out there. So the security company is still there. He continues to meet your other conditions on the license. He's never appealed the other conditions from the time that they were imposed.
Just the extra-duty police, right? He's just appealing the, the extra-duty police officer that he has to pay for.
That was the only time that it was imposed.
And that's what you're appealing today?
Yes. I, I, that's the appeal that's pending. I just want to say one other thing that you may not be aware of, is that he sought police officers from other municipalities. One of the requirements is they be uniform. The police officer, the other towns will not allow their police officers in their town's uniform to provide security for anything in the city, in another city. We tried that. We tried with Franklin Township, and we have tried with Brunswick, when that condition was first placed there. Because if you look at the original condition, it said a security company or an off-duty police officer for another municipality. Okay.
Yes, the hours, what are the hours, from 9 to, that you have that uniformed police officer?
The hours would have been from 9 to closing.
All right, now this is taken during the day.
This is taken during the day.
Doesn't mean the neighborhood, the neighborhood changes dramatically.
No, so, so.
Can I finish? The neighborhood changes dramatically at night.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we're taking the pictures at night, it wouldn't look, it wouldn't look like this.
Absolutely. You have the Skylark Bar in there, you have, you have La Corona there. In the neighborhood, there are eight bars on that strip. And I can tell you, because I was born at 35 Jersey Avenue when I know that neighborhood.
So your contention, Mr. Gussis, that really Metiera is not involved in anything problems whatsoever?
I'm not saying that there may not be people who do that, but not to the level that, that they're talking about.
Besides them, the police officer, all the other conditions are okay?
As far as I know.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Gussis? Okay, we have to see if anybody from the public would like to speak on the Metiera. Yes, please, ma'am, come on up. Is this, are they, are you on behalf, are they on behalf here, you, Mr. Gussis?
I'm not calling.
Yes, name and address, please.
Yes, on behalf of all of us, but I'm Rosa Tomás, Vanessa, and I'm here to translate.
Okay.
Excuse me, would she be sworn? Will she be sworn as a?
This is bubble comment, this is not a.
But she's interpreting it. The comment is to be in Spanish, and she's only interpreting it in English.
Jessica Mar.
Could you interpret? We have, when we said the bar here, can you raise your right hand, interpreter?
Yes.
You swear to double truth, the whole truth, double truth, up and down?
Yes.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Rafael Sanchez, un integrante más del equipo de Esperanza.
Good afternoon, my name is Rafael Sanchez, and a member for Esperanza.
Bueno, de antemano, les doy las gracias por darnos el apoyo al tipo de actividades que llevamos. ¿Cuáles son?
For head, I want to thank you for allowing to.
Limpieza y seguridad. Nuestras gracias por dar el apoyo a las actividades que llevamos que son limpieza y seguridad en la comunidad.
Okay, I want to say thank you for, for supporting us in the activities in the community, which are cleaning the city, and the other activities are related to, to keep the, to keep the city safe and clean.
De antemano quiero aclarar, no es nada contra la actividad comercial del Bar ni tierra.
This is nothing against Metiera Bar.
Sino que nos estamos centrando en la frente y sus alrededores para la limpieza y la seguridad.
Well, right now, we're going into the French, French Street to clean and to keep it safe.
Si se ha mejorado un poco la situación.
The situation has gotten better.
La policía, la más vigilancia.
The, the police is providing more security.
Pero no es suficiente, aún falta más.
But it's not enough, it's still more.
Quiero invitar al propietario del Bar ni tierra, sus representantes.
I would like to invite the, the owner of Metiera Bar.
Para que se una a nuestro anhelo de tener mejor seguridad en ese, en ese perímetro.
I would like, I would like to send a invitation to the owner of Metiera Bar to come, to get together with us and pretty much better French.
Los conflictos no los genera ni el propietario ni su empleador del Bar ni tierra, sino que es bien sabido, son grupos que tienen actividades nocivas y violentas.
Pretty much, what is going on is not because of the bar itself, but it's a certain people that goes in it, in the bar and makes it look bad, pretty much.
Si no se hace nada, esta situación nociva y violenta se va incrementando.
If we don't do anything, if we don't do something about it right now, it's gonna get worse.
Yo recuerdo que en años anteriores algo parecido empezaba a suscitar en el. Yo recuerdo que en años anteriores algo parecido empezaba a suscitar en el Bar, Mis Amigos, está en la Remsen.
I remember years back, something similar was happening, and some, I guess misconduct was starting to raise at a police call, my friends.
Al parecer algo ha hecho el propietario, porque se ve que ya hay un poco más de tranquilidad y seguridad.
Um, it seems that the owner of that place has done something about it, because it looks like it's getting better now. Rather than getting worse, it's getting better now.
Es lo que estamos buscando en la frente, que para un bienestar comunitario público y para el bienestar de los comercios de la zona.
That's what we're looking for, to bring something good in the French Street that we want to bring everybody together in that area.
Gracias de antemano y gracias de todas maneras por escucharnos.
I just want to make a comment, a clarification of something that you translated, Hannah. It's not quite what he said. When he talked about the owner and the people, the management of Metiera, what he said was that the patrons in the bars are causing the problems and need to do a little bit more, the owner and the manager, to control that. And he conferred that to the Remsen Avenue Bar, the Tres Amigos, which they had the same situation before, and the owner and the management do control the situation and were able to make the situation better. So, it's not that they... He's not saying that they were not at fault, or that they... But they're willing to work with them to make better that entire French Big Corridor. We're all thankful, Hannah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. May I ask Mr. Sanchez questions?
Sure. Could you tell us, Mr. Sanchez?
I would like to ask a question.
Mr. Sanchez, can you tell me where you actually live?
Ah, you can say that, don't you say where you live? Direction you live, what is it?
Yo vivo en la calle de la Van, y mi... Ese es la vía de mi paso diario.
What is the direction?
The direction is la ciento cuarenta y siete de la Van, pero yo camino diariamente.
One forty-seven what?
Dela Van.
Dela Van.
Dela Van Street.
Del Van Street. How far is one forty-seven Del Van Street from the corner of Handy and Jersey Avenue?
Que tanto es la calle o se vive?
No, más o menos aproximadamente media milla.
Have you ever been in Metiera?
Constantemente, yo transito por ahí.
My question is, have you ever been in Metiera?
I would like to ask you to start. In Metiera. Se ha entrado en la bar?
Sí, yo entiendo. No, no he tenido la oportunidad de entrar, porque ese tipo de actividad no me llama la atención.
No, he hasn't been in.
Are you aware that Mr. Sulu Kumar has someone who cleans up all around the property every day?
Usted tiene entendido que el señor de propietario de Metiera tiene alguien que limpia?
Ah, right. Lo que pasa es que anteriormente yo vivía en la que, y por eso me daba cuenta, en la que, algo así como unos cien kilómetros retirados del Bar Mis Amigos.
Okay.
Mr. Gussis, we're gonna have to move along, all right? You can surmise what everybody has to say.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else comments on the Metiera Bar?
Muy buenas tardes, mi nombre es Esther Herrera.
My name is Esther Herrera.
Vivo en la calle de la Yerzy.
I live in St. Jersey.
Cerca del Bar Mi Tierra.
Next to Bar Mi Tierra.
Y estoy aquí porque soy del grupo Esperanza.
I am here because I belong to the Esperanza group.
Este, vengo aquí para darles las gracias por lo que han hecho, por lo que nosotros hemos tratado de pedir más vigilancia en el Bar Mi Tierra.
Okay, I'm here to thank you for what the city have done for us, especially more security for Bar Mi Tierra.
Y pues, yo como ya tengo cinco años viviendo ahí, antes era muy peligroso andar de las diez de la noche en adelante.
Uh, I've been living there for five years, and it was very dangerous to be around the area around ten o'clock at nighttime.
Pero ya ahora con esto de que nos están dando más apoyo con eso de la policía.
Now with the help, with more security of the police.
Ya está más, otro poquito más vigilado, más calmado, y ya se puede andar mejor a veces. Uno que trabaja de noche ya llega a la una, a las dos de la mañana.
It is a little safer now with the police presence around there. Now, I'm able to get home around one to the AM after work.
Y ya llega uno con más confianza a su casa, porque ve uno que está un security ahí, en la esquina, vigilando, y este, pues ya uno llega, ya con más seguridad a su casa, ya hay menos peligro. Pero aún así, the security se va, y llegan los borrachitos ahí a hacer problemas.
Okay, um, it's more secure now to walk at nighttime. I feel more confident to get home at a late hours, uh, one AM, two AM. But once the security, once the police leaves, that's when the drunken people start walking in.
Okay?
I have a clarification. Pero usted dice que los, después que se vea security, la policía no hay presencia, usted dice que personas ebrias, borrachas, pueden entrar a la barra, o se congregan al frente de la barra? Además, they may not be present. I'm just asking clarification from her about her statement, whether it is that after security, the police is no longer in the area, she says that if people are going into the bar, or are they congregated in the area? I just want a clarification of that from her.
La... las personas, están... Están, de las que salían, están afuera de este recinto, o adentro de este recinto?
No, afuera. Se reúna de la calle.
Okay, de la calle, de su... ¿Puede decirle que se abanee?
No, no le hace decir que la cierra, porque no la ha tomado. Pero después que el security se retirara a ese lugar, entonces salen los borrachitos de la esquina, los morenos, y empiezan a hacer escándalo, y empiezan a quebrar los vidrios de los carros.
So, she says that, to be fair, is that once the security leaves from the bar, the area, that people congregate in that corner again to start fighting, or there's urinating, you know, breaking cars, so that happens at that time?
But my understanding is that she thinks that the police are there. And it's his security, and when his security isn't there, the bar is closed.
No, she just mentioned that if the security closes, the police patrol in the area. She mentioned both of... Did she mention the security?
Well, that's gonna happen, that's gonna happen anyway. That's gonna happen anyway. But have you ever... Can I ask her?
Sure.
Okay. Your father that I didn't?
Excuse me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Gracias, muy amable.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Bonfia Harkey.
Good evening, my name is Bonfia Harkey.
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 Um, soy miembro de proyecto Esperanza.
I am a member of the Esperanza.
Um, solo yo quiero agregar algo más, lo que han dicho mis compañeros.
I just want to add more to what my fellow member has said.
Aparte de haber sido residente ahí en el área de la treinta y tres Jersey Avenue.
Aside from being a resident at the thirty-third Jersey Avenue.
Al cual yo me tuve que mover, por diferentes estudios que hay en esta área.
Which I have to move out of the area because of, how would you say, seven?
Disturbances.
Disturbances in the area.
Um, actualmente vivo en cuarenta y tres Lewis Street.
Uh, currently I live at fifty-three Lewis Street.
Pero mi área que yo trabajo como vendedora de cosméticos y nociónes.
But the area where I work selling cosmetics.
Um, es mi área French Jersey Avenue y Hand Street.
Is the area of French Street and Hand Street.
Solo para completar es, que prácticamente sí se ha hecho un cambio.
There has been change.
Pero no es suficiente.
But is that enough for us?
A comparación del año pasado, ahora hay menos llamadas.
Compared to last year, to this year, there's less calls.
Pero sí hay todavía quejas sobre estudios en el área.
But there's still complaints about disturbances around the area.
En específico por Bar Mi Tierra.
And especially because of Bar Mi Tierra, Metiera Bar.
Y también, ahorita actualmente, como para segundo lugar, de todas las barras de aquí del área de New Brunswick.
Right now it's ranked number two in the whole area in New Brunswick.
Nuestra opinión para nosotros como proyecto.
Our opinion as a project.
Which ranked number two?
Uh, Bar Mi Tierra around... What she's trying to say, that Bar Mi Tierra is number two in all the bars, within the bars in New Brunswick. Pero porque es número dos. I'm asking her why it's number two.
El más conflicto.
Oh, that one, okay, so she's saying that it's ranked number two as being the more conflicted?
Where did she get that ranking from?
Don, this is a question.
Nosotros pedimos, aquí en el área, en la ciudad, pedimos todos los récords de lo que está pasando sobre las barras.
I guess they requested the city to... I mean, they asked the city, or they requested information about what's going on around the city with the bars. So, that's how she was able to gather the information.
So, she's saying that they're number two for what, service, calls for service?
No, they're... I mean, Metiera Bar is number two in the city for having the most complaints.
That's what I'm talking about. Is that true, Captain, I've been texting?
Uh, I believe it's, I believe it is actually. Yeah.
Uh, might be number three. What's... Which one is it?
It's number three.
Number three?
Yes.
Trace.
About having incidents.
Okay, go ahead.
Since, can I ask Officer DeGraw? No, Officer DeGraw, Officer DeGraw, is that based on your statistics from the CAD report?
Yes, sir.
But not from any investigation of any complaints specifically to a place, right?
I mean, you clarify that question a little bit.
I'd say, but not because of any investigation as to the follow-up on the complaints to see what was actually attributed to the bar, right?
Correct.
So, thirty-three Jersey Avenue is directly opposite the shopping center, correct? Do I ask you?
Uh, can you repeat it again?
That thirty-three Jersey Avenue where you lived is directly across from the shopping center.
Uh, la calle treinta y tres Jersey Avenue.
La casa.
La casa, sorry.
And in fact, isn't loitering and noise a problem in that parking lot? And Walgreens has a big sign on the wall, that's in your pictures, by the way, that says "No loitering"? Here, let me ask you.
Porque si la casa número treinta y tres directamente, under the shopping center, on the Walgreens, that's the area that we're standing.
Está enfrente de Walgreens, está enfrente del parque Oaxaca, que le dicen.
It's right across from the park and across from the Walgreens.
And so, the park also has people loitering there and making noise all night long, correct?
Es lo que se ha notado, sí que ahí mismo en el parque está, la gente tirando basura, haciendo ruido. Sí, es correcto, no?
Es correcto, pero también...
You answered it. You answered. Now, let me ask you this: Have you ever been in Metiera?
O sea, en Metiera, sí, estaba de eso, estaba...
Sí, y la verdad es...
You answered, C is... C is... No. Now, let me ask you this: Do you know that there are security inside the Metiera?
Yes.
And you know there's cameras inside Metiera, correct?
Hay que también hay, y que también hay cámaras. Usted está alerta, usted sabe que hay cámaras, que hay security también ahí en Metiera.
Yo no sé cómo operen las barras, pero en realidad nosotros trabajamos comoabajadores de salud en la comunidad, justamente con mi compañera, Milcha, y tuvimos la desagradable oportunidad de entrar ahí.
All right, so she's saying that, that working along with her fellow members of Esperanza, they had the opportunity to go inside, which was not something pleasant, so that's how they ended up going inside?
Let's just continue with the testimony. We gotta move along.
Okay, she's... So, you want to testify?
Please, let's go.
Y para nosotros como proyecto, que queremos ver una comunidad segura y limpia.
We want to see a community safe and clean.
Queremos que, la petición que pedimos la primera vez.
We want the petition that we asked for the first time.
Que se haga válida.
To make it, um, to make it valid, to make it valid.
Que necesitamos en realidad la policía ahí, la presencia.
We need the police in there, we need the presence of a police in that area, in there.
Thank you.
See you next.
Seeing, and nobody else from the public? Anybody else have any comments on the Metiera? Or they can make a motion for somebody to make a motion that would be moved to a closed session?
Closed session.
We're gonna take a closed session. Go ahead, take the motion.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming. Councilmember Garlotti. Council President Egan.
Yes.
For the record, the purpose of the closed session is to discuss the testimony heard regarding imposition of special conditions on Metiera Bar inasmuch as saying may result litigation regarding appeal.
Can I get a motion, please, to go back into open session, please? Can I second? Go for it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Shammy, could you please advise the public of recommendations?
The minutes of the closed session will reflect that the council discussed the testimony elicited regarding imposition of special conditions upon Metiera on license year two thousand sixteen seventeen. After discussions among, between the council, considering the testimony presented and the reports reviewed, that being the TAVL report, the council is prepared to adopt the resolution with the first special condition. Licensees shall hire uniformed security officers from a private security firm to maintain order in and about the licensed premises while the premises is open for business during the hours of ten PM to two thirty AM on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings. Licensees shall also furnish monthly written reports of the names and addresses of that particular security firm and individuals working. It's been suggested that perhaps the licensee explore a possible new security firm to ensure that they are diligent in their security duties and responsibilities. The second through sixth condition will remain the same. Licensees shall maintain order on and within the licensed premises. Licensees shall police the sidewalk adjoining licensed premises each day the premises open for business. Four, licensees shall allow open layout of the premises from that that is shown in the sketch previously filed with the city clerk without further resumishing counsel. Five, licensees shall continue the use of the existing video cameras, shall annotate all film for time and date, and shall maintain set tapes for at least thirty days. And six, licensees shall be in compliance with ordinance O-oh-two-nine-six-oh-nine as a mandatory relative to educational requirements for owners and managers. I have the forming resolution O-dash, I'm sorry, R-oh-seven-one-six-nine-two, which I've amended accordingly. And should the council be so inclined to adopt the resolution now, we could do it as opposed to waiting for consent of that agenda.
I would love to do it now.
Okay.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Public comment?
Any public comment on that resolution? Seeing none?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Council, do you understand what we're discussing?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that this will move the appeal that we're in the middle of presently. Because the state was issued on the requirement.
Got you.
So, we can end that also.
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Gussis, I will provide a fully conformed resolution to your office tomorrow, if that's okay, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next, we have, Mr. Shammy, are we gonna go back to...
We're gonna go back to now the... We're gonna go back to now the Gollum matter, Mr. Gustas, don't leave, sir.
No, I'm not gonna leave, but I think your witnesses are here.
Yeah, you wanna go back to that meeting, you wanna go back to J.J. Tavon? Our witnesses are here.
Alright, we can go back to the CASM.
I'll start with the Gollum.
Okay. We're gonna go back to the CASM, Mr. Seeger? Council for CASM, we have witnesses, uh, testimony. Mr. Shami, you're on.
Thank you. Um, let me see who's here. Getting old and I don't know these young guys.
Detective, could you tell us something?
Who's here, please?
At least other officers that are here.
Sorry, sir, we have officers, Jose M. Gomez and Stuart White are here tonight right now.
Alright, let's call Officer Weg.
Which count is he on, you know?
I'm sorry?
Which count is?
I'll give that to you right now. That's count six, seven, eight, ten.
Right up here, please, put your right hand, please, so we're covering two, the whole two, then look two, self, you got it?
I know.
Now, you may have to see it right there.
Thanks, sir.
Can you tell us your name and rank, please, officer?
Uh, Officer Stuart Weg, I'm a patrol officer.
How old are you, a cop, sir?
Uh, just over a year, sir.
Over a year, thank you. Good afternoon, thank you. Good afternoon, officer. You employed, sir, by the city of New Brunswick?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
And you're a police officer?
Yes, sir.
You worked at Patrol Division, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in connection with your duties and responsibilities as a police officer with the New Brunswick Police Department, you have occasion to answer calls for service, address disturbances, things of that nature?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Are you familiar with a liquor license establishment located in the city of New Brunswick called Lounge Seven Three Two, or JJ's?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And have you been to that particular establishment on occasion?
Uh, yes, sir, multiple times.
Multiple times? Can you tell us currently what shift you work, sir?
I work the third shift, which is eight A.M. to six forty-five A.M.
Back on January first, December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, January first, two thousand sixteen, were you working that particular shift?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it was in the Patrol Division, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Somebody mixed up my papers.
It's your partner.
Yeah, I suspect, oh, here they are, okay, let me show you, um.
She was looking for her seat.
Let me show you a report, um, that's.
The gun of your seat exhibits here, that's.
Yeah, which, which is January first?
It's the whole, I think.
You have my seat exhibits there, maybe I have to use yours, Paul. There's multiple ones of January first, two thousand sixteen, here it is. Let me show you what's been marked C eight for identification. Take a look at that particular incident, sir. Are you working on January first, two thousand sixteen, in the city of New Brunswick?
Uh, yes, sir, I was.
Okay. Do you have occasion with other officers to respond to a call for service to the Lounge Seven Three Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you need to look at that report to refresh your recollection, you could do so, sir. I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions about your visit there. I'll leave you ready.
Yes, sir, right.
Okay. Did you have occasion to respond to a call there for service?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. Can you tell us approximately what time of the morning or night it was?
It was about five forty-two A.M. on January first.
Okay, so that's New Year's Eve, actually, New Year's Day, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you, can you tell us why you responded to that particular location?
Uh, we were dispatched to that location, one eighty-six Hampton Street, or Seven Three Two Lounge, for reporting that the bar was still open and serving alcohol.
And what time of the morning was this?
Uh, five forty-two in the morning.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Five forty-two A.M.
Okay. Now, I know you haven't been an officer in the city of New Brunswick too long, but I'm gonna ask you a question that I think you could provide the answer to. On New Year's Eve, it's a New Year's Day, how long are the liquor license establishments in the city of New Brunswick allowed to open till?
They're permitted to open until five A.M.
That's the right answer. Is the reason for the call to that particular establishment because someone was complaining about noise coming from the establishment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us what your investigation revealed when you went there.
Uh, we arrived and we observed the front door locked and secured. We were able to be allowed to go from the back room of the bar. I was able to view from the glass window next to the front door that the bar was empty, although the lounge area had a large number of people, like, towards the rear building.
Okay. Were you able to gain access to the establishment sooner or later?
Yes, sir, through the exit door.
Okay, somebody let you in?
Yes.
Or the doors were locked, though?
Yes, sir, they were locked.
Okay. When you entered the establishment, can you tell us what you observed?
We observed forty to fifty people still inside the bar, and we observed that liquor was actively being consumed inside the bar.
Okay, so they were consuming liquor inside the establishment?
Yes, sir.
And what time of the morning was this?
Uh, five forty-two in the morning, sir.
Okay. Now, you're aware that there's a city ordinance that says you can't dispense alcohol, as well as the state regulation, after five A.M. on the morning of New Year's Day, correct?
Yes, sir.
With respect to your visit to that particular location, did you have any occasion to speak to the owner of the establishment, or someone who held himself out to be the owner or the manager?
Yes, sir.
Who was that?
Uh, his name was Rupatio Garcia.
Do you recognize that individual in the room here today? You might have to turn around, I don't think it's any of these people.
He's right behind me.
Right behind you, it's, okay, that Mr. Garcia, is that, is that who you spoke to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And did you advise him that he's open after hours?
Yes, we did.
Did he respond to you in any way, what did he say?
We informed him that everyone needed to leave the bar immediately.
Okay. And did everyone then leave the bar?
Yes.
Okay. Was this information eventually conveyed to Detective DeGraw in the ABC Investigation Unit?
Yes, it was, sir.
Okay, were any other actions taken by you or your fellow officers on that particular occasion?
Uh, we issued the, the order, Garcia, to see who was to leave.
Okay. And let me talk to you about that, I'm glad that you, when you first arrived, you said you could hear the music outside?
Yes, sir.
Emanating into the, into the sidewalk area?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And when you finally got inside, was it louder?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Was it a DJ, or a band, or if you recall?
I can't recall it, sir.
Okay. Any other particular summonses or violations issued at that time?
Uh, not clearly, recollection, sir.
Okay. Alright, I don't believe I have any more questions for the officers on these particular counts, uh, seven, six, seven, eight, and ten.
Mr. Seeger?
Officer, I noticed you extensively referred to your report. Was that necessary for your testimony to make? Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure that I spoke that, spoke that field. So when it says in here that, uh, no, there was no view that alcohol was being passed over the bar to any customers, that, that would be your testimony also? That's accurate. So people were in there, but no one was being served at the bar? We did not physically observe, they don't being served, but we observed consuming alcohol inside a liquor establishment that was supposed to be closed at five A.M. Nothing further.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does Mr. Seeger have any witnesses on any of these particular counts?
What point, what did he get?
That's, um, six, seven, eight, ten. Actually, Officer Weg, come on back. While Mr. Seeger's looking, I wanna talk to you about another incident.
Have a seat, officer.
Yes, sir.
It's all coming back to you.
Yeah, well, I find my, my.
Oh, please.
Let me show you what's been marked C nine for identification. Take a look at that particular report, and I'm gonna tell you that it references the September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen incident.
What you did.
What number are we going on?
Count number eleven.
Eleven.
In either report to refresh your recollection, I'll just take your time, okay?
Yes, you need the Tavon Report or anything else, don't be afraid of that.
You ready, officer? Pretty much, almost.
Yes, sir.
Were you involved in that call for response?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay, tell us about that, what was that?
Uh, it was a call for a shot fired on September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, at one fifty-four A.M.
One fifty-four A.M. shot fired? Okay, and that, does it reflect in that report you called about the shot fired?
Yes, sir, residence, uh, Russell Street, at one seventy-three Hampton Street.
Okay. And did you arrive at the scene with your fellow officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what did your investigation reveal?
Uh, we were unable to, dispatch provided us the information that a silver bike Chrysler had left Hampton Street to fled toward Easton Avenue. We were unable to locate the vehicle. Uh, we eventually spoke to the callers at one seventy-three Hampton Street, who stated that they were on the porch and heard a loud noise, sounded like a gunshot, come from there, one eighty-six Hampton Street. Uh, they observed a group of people scattered in the area, and they later observed four males wearing red bodys, leaning against the front way of one seventy-three Hampton Street. They got a tap of a flash of the S U V, and they were headed for bar patrol areas, leaving the area for the day, but they left the area.
Okay, and was there any indication by the witnesses or anyone who observed these individuals that they were outside the Lounge Seven Three Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To your knowledge, were any arrests made in connection with that incident, or any charges filed against anyone?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Alright, no further questions for Officer Weg on count eleven.
Uh, none of the witnesses say they were patrons of Seven Thirty-two Lounge, correct? No, sir, they were sitting on the porch across the street when they heard that noise. And they observed a large number of people scattered in the area. And, but that's a public street, correct? Yes, sir. And it's right off Easton Avenue, not too far off Easton Avenue. It's about a half mile from this avenue. According to your report, a description was given to the vehicle, and that it was headed down Easton Avenue. Did anybody pursue that vehicle? Uh, no, sir. So even though you had the, the make and the color, and, and there was a report of gunshots, no, no officers were dispatched to try to check or follow that vehicle? Uh, all units in the area were provided that information, but no one was able to locate that vehicle. So no one was ever caught? Correct. Now, they gave you information about four other males that stayed in the area, correct? Correct. After the, the entire group had scattered, and four made it and left. So I'm assuming that they were right in the mix, correct? Yes, sir. There's no indication that they were interrogated? That's correct, sir. So they stayed in the area and didn't leave until after you left? That's right. And they were right in front of one eighty-six, so they would have had a better bird's eye view of what happened than the ladies did, the neighbors? Yes, sir. And they weren't interviewed? Yes, sir, they were. I'm nothing further.
Okay, any witnesses on, on count eleven, because I have another one for, for Officer Weg, he's turning into my starter witness here. Would you like to go to another count, then? Yes, I'd like to go to count fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yep.
Okay.
Officer, let me show you what's been marked C eleven for identification, take a look at this particular report. It, uh, it's a stupid question, speaks of an incident on August fifth, two thousand fifteen. Take a look at the report, if you need to refresh your recollection, and I'm gonna ask you if you were one of the officers that responded to that call for service. Okay, officer, were you part of the officers that responded to that particular call?
Uh, yes, sir, it was, at the Ullinburg Hospital, thank you.
Okay. Tell us about that, you had to go to Ullinburg Hospital to interview someone?
Uh, yes, sir, we were, we were at that location at four fifteen A.M., on August fifteenth, to speak with Rashad Watkins and Marcus Ellis, who were assaulted at subject to one eighty-six Hampton Street.
Okay, so those individuals advised you that they were assaulted at this particular license establishment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and did they describe in any detail the nature of the assault?
Uh, they said that about two A.M. on August fifth, they were attacked from behind by a group of six to seven males, and they did not.
Okay. Did they sustain injuries as a result of that?
Yes, sir. Watkins sustained severe injuries to his face, specifically bleeding from his lips, and painful pain from his upper chest.
Okay. And this interview took place at the hospital?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you aware of any charges that were filed against the perpetrator as a result of this particular incident?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Okay. Is this something that's turned over to detectives usually, and they follow up on these types of things?
Yes, sir.
Uh, your knowledge, were any summonses issued to the licensed establishment, or violations for this incident that you're aware of?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
And you got cross on that?
Mr. Seeger?
Um, other than Mr. Watkins' statement, no one saw anything in New Brunswick regarding this event. That's right. In fact, the gentleman that was with him couldn't provide you any information because he was so intoxicated and on drugs. Uh, he was medicated at hospital, sir. Intoxicated, yes, sir. So it's merely a statement of somebody in a hospital complaining about just what happened and where it happened? Yes, sir. Nothing further.
Officer, did the individual that Mr. Seeger said was severely intoxicated indicate to you that his severe intoxication resulted from his time at the Lounge Seven Three Two?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you, I have no further questions in this office.
Mr. Seeger?
You have nothing in your report about that, about where he drank that evening, whether he left, whether he drank before Three Seven Two? Is there anything in there about? It says that Watkins and Ellis were leaving Seven Three Two Lounge, had a trip to a, at August fifth, when they were at that. But there's nothing in there about where they might have drank in after leaving Three Two, Three Seven Two, or before Three Seven Two? If you're leaving a bar, especially, they consumed alcohol inside that establishment. But they may have not been there all evening, they could have been bar hot. That is correct. That's what I'm saying. I have nothing further.
No further questions, thank you, officer, thank you, officer. Who else do we have back here, detective?
Detective Alexander, Sir Jose M. Gomez, and Officer Reed.
Okay. I'd like to call Officer Reed. And.
Officer, raise your, raise your right hand, just where you tell them to, the whole two, then look two, self, you got it?
Yes.
Your name and rank, please?
Officer Richard Reed, rank of patrol, badge number seven three one hundred.
Thank you.
Have a seat.
Which one is this?
This is count 15, counsel, I'm sorry. Uh, Officer, are you employed, sir?
Yes, sir.
And by whom?
City of New Brunswick.
And in what capacity?
Uh, Patrol.
Okay, uh, what shift do you assign to the Patrol Division?
At the time of this incident, it was the midnight shift of 8:30 PM to 6:45 AM.
Okay, when you say this incident, let me show you a exhibit marked, uh, I have two of them here, they're both dated, same date, but we do it a little different. Uh, let me show you what's been marked C-12 for identification. Take a look at this particular exhibit, it's an incident from October 3rd, 2015, is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay, take a look at that report, see if it references, um, a particular call for service on that date to Lounge 732. And I want to show you C-13 as well, which is another supplemental report that I believe, details the same, the same call for service. So I have 12, 13, and I believe there's a 14 too, but I don't want to overload you. So I'm just gonna take a look at those two. Tell me when you're done having your recollection refreshed, and I'll ask you a couple of questions.
I'm good.
Are you familiar with a liquor licensed establishment known as Lounge 732?
Yes.
And it's located in the city of New Brunswick, right, Officer?
Yes.
Now, back on, uh, October 3rd, 2015, at about 1:30 AM, you were working the night shift?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and did you respond to a call for service and other officers?
Yes.
To this location? All right, tell us about the purpose of the call for service at that particular date and time.
Call for service was four A.M., shots fired in the area of Lounge 732 Lounge. 14 to 935 was initially dispatched, I arrived on scene to back him up.
Okay, when you arrived, can you tell the counsel your observations regarding what you saw and where you saw it?
When I arrived, I observed Officer Gomez, uh, taking a female, he was going to take her into company.
Okay.
Under the disorderly act?
Disorderly act, yes.
Okay, did you observe any crowds of individuals, any altercation in progress, or tell us what happened, what you actually saw when you were there?
So I, I was in 14 to 937, I stepped out after Officer Gomez, uh, taking a female custody. As I was watching him, the bar was down, ran a little bit, and the bouncer had approached me and said there was any large fight inside.
Inside the establishment?
Yes.
And you know this individual to be the bouncer or security officer from the bar?
Yes.
He identified himself as such?
Yes.
Okay, what did you do next?
I then stepped into the bar to see what was going on with the assistant officers.
Okay, what did you observe when you, when you went inside the establishment?
There was a large crowd inside, um, I gave commands to start leaving, and eventually they began to clear out.
Did you observe anyone striking each other, or any yelling, or arguing, or anything of that nature?
There was a lot of people in there, though I couldn't see anybody physically fighting, uh, however, there was a lot of people that were standing around yelling.
All right, did you see, uh, any members of management or ownership in the bar after you had had that encounter with the bouncer?
No.
Could you know an individual by the name of, uh, Cupertino Garcia? You ever meet him?
Yes, I have.
Do you know who he is?
Yes.
Would you recognize him here in the room?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who is he?
He's sitting behind me.
Sitting behind you. Did you see him here that, that evening? Did you see him there that particular night when you arrived for your call?
I did not.
Okay, did he ever approach you, or any of your other officers, fellow officers that night?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. How did this incident end up?
Officer Gomez ended up arresting a female.
Right.
We gave commands, the people were clear, and then leave the streets and that was it. Out front, there was another altercation that took place.
Another altercation out front with who, patrons?
Yes.
And what happened with that altercation?
As I approached them, they, they observed myself and fellow officers, they split immediately and walked away.
Okay, any arrests made, other than your fellow officer arresting the, the female?
No.
Okay, um, any other charges that you're aware of filed against anybody?
No.
Wade, um... I'll strike that, I have no further questions for this, uh, officer on this count.
Thank you, Mr. Seeker?
Which is this, 15?
This is 15, correct.
I have no, no questions for this officer.
Do you need the same officer for any other counts?
No, I think we're good, I want to thank Officer...
Thank you, Officer Reed, for your time, I appreciate it.
I'd like to call, uh, Officer, uh, Gomez.
Officer Gomez?
This is regarding the same count.
This is the same count, and then we're gonna go into, uh, 16 as well.
Officer Gomez, raise your right hand, please, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the look to yourself you got.
I do.
Name and rank, please, and...
Officer Jose M. Gomez, Chomen, Police Department.
Thank you, have a seat, sir.
Officer, you're employed by the New Brunswick Police Department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, currently in Patrol capacity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you're still employed by the city of New Brunswick Police Department back on October 3rd, 2015?
Yes, sir.
Okay, were you working, which shift on that particular day?
I worked midnight shift.
Okay, um, are you familiar with a liquor licensed establishment in New Brunswick called Lounge 732?
Yes, sir.
How are you familiar with that place?
I've responded to numerous calls to 732 Lounge.
Okay, how long have you been an officer?
I have been an officer for a year and 11 months.
Okay, and you've had numerous calls to that establishment, in a year, 11 months?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, let me show you what's been marked, um, C-12 and C-13 for identification. Take a look at those particular reports, and see if that refreshes your recollection regarding, uh, a call for service on that particular date, October 3rd, 2015. You were there with fellow Officer Reed, and, uh, once you're ready, let me know, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions.
And do you actually have my supplemental there?
Actually, I might, um, give me a minute. I think I do have to refer to, uh, C-20 for identification. Same date, not that, uh, this is the next one, this is C-12, with, uh, all, uh...
Apology accepted, but hurry up.
Does your supplemental refer to this particular case number?
Yes, sir.
Lots of reports. Doesn't look like I'm finding it. Do you have your supplemental with you?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I can't recall the incident, though.
You can't? Okay, once you've testified to the best of your recollection and ability, uh...
I would just note that there's additional information that wasn't made available.
Well, I didn't even have it, sorry. The record was flushed, I'm not holding back on this, Mr. Seeker, I'm just fortunate that you have your supplemental up, apparently. You remember this incident?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what do you remember about it?
I was in Patrol Vehicle 935, accompanied by Officer Tejada, R.E.P.D. Uh, we were controlling the area of Hamilton and High, and we noticed, uh, a group of individuals, uh, yelling at each other.
Okay, where were they located, up on the corner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, outside this licensed establishment?
Yes, sir.
Was it in the street, was it in the sidewalk?
Uh, you had people in the street and in the sidewalk.
Can you estimate the number of individuals?
Well, I would say from 10 to 20, maybe 30 people.
Okay, all right, what happened next?
Uh, Officer, uh, Tejada and myself, we stepped out of the vehicle, uh, we began giving commands to leave the area, uh, as we were yelling commands, uh, I believe dispatch received a call, shots fired.
Shots fired?
Yes.
Okay, what happened next?
Um, uh, we were trying to find an individual, they gave, uh, a description, no individual was located. Uh, there was specifically one female, uh, arguing with another female, uh, supposedly they had fought before we got there, uh, we didn't witness the fight, uh, we kept telling them to go home, you know, she needed a report, we made a report for her, after numerous commands, she decided not to listen to us, uh, so she was arrested on disorderly conduct.
Did you arrest her, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, during your arrival at the scene, uh, did you ever observe or have any contact or conversation with any of the management or ownership of the lounge?
No, sir.
Did you see any of them outside when this was all going on?
No, sir.
At what time of the evening was this, morning, approximately?
Roughly between 1:50 and 2:05.
Okay, and the bars closed in New Brunswick at 2 AM, right?
Yes, sir.
Other than the individual you just mentioned that was charged with a disorderly, did you file charges against anyone else?
No, sir.
All right, no further questions for Officer Gomez on this particular count.
Mr. Seeker?
I'm curious about the shots fired, it sounds like you were right at ground zero when these shots should've been fired.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear shots fired?
Uh, no, I did not, but there was a delay of time, by the time dispatch gets it, and then by the time they dispatched it to us. So there might be five, you know, five, 10 minute delay, by the time they get it, or we, we, like, somebody decides to call it in, that goes, time goes by, and then by the time they dispatched it to us, time goes by there, so...
But you, is my recollection that you said you were there because you were on patrol in that neighborhood anyway?
Yes.
And you, you got out to, to deal with the crowd control?
Yes, sir.
And then you heard it from dispatch, so you were there actually in the timeframe that would've delayed some back?
Yes, sir.
And you didn't hear any shots fired?
No, sir.
Thank you, would you, would you else have anything for Officer Gomez?
I have another, uh, count I want to talk to you about.
Okay, just sit right here, sir, go ahead, Mr. Shane.
Count 20, um, on March 12th, 2016, Officer Reed, you were working the patrol detail on that particular date and time?
Yes, sir.
All right, for the record, the patrol was in C-20, for, um, can you take a look at that incident report, if you need to review it to refresh your recollection, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions about that particular date. Good?
Yes, sir.
All right, did you, uh, respond to a call for service at that particular licensed establishment you're talking about, 732, on that date?
Yes, sir.
What time of the day or night was it?
That was... At 2:00 in the morning.
2:00 in the morning, what was the purpose or the nature of the call for service?
Uh, Detective Alexander requested backup.
Okay, who, what was Detective Alexander doing at the lounge on that particular night?
He was, uh, working extra duty.
He was an extra duty officer employed by the establishment on that night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, um, tell us what happened.
Uh, Detective Alexander requested, uh, backup.
Why?
Uh, there was a disturbance outside 732 Lounge.
All right, and when you arrived, what did you observe?
Uh, I noticed, uh, another officer, Officer Ganser, on the corner, uh, of 732 Lounge, with a suspect, uh, on the ground.
Okay, what did you do?
Uh, he had control of that situation, uh, there was a group of people gathering around him, so I began to push the crowd further from Officer Ganser.
Were these individuals right outside the lounge?
Yes, sir, there's like a little fence, in an area right next to the lounge, they were in there.
Okay, how many approximately?
About 15 people.
15 people?
Yes, sir.
Did you observe that any of these individuals to be intoxicated?
Yes, sir.
What happened next?
Um, I began yelling, uh, verbal commands, uh, to leave the area, uh, there was one individual, uh, did not want to leave, uh, he, uh, kept pushing everybody else, and, uh...
Pushing police officers?
Not police officers, other bystanders.
Oh, other patrons?
Yeah, they were in the crowd, uh, he was told numerous times to leave the area, uh, then he went around the fenced area, and he began, uh, pointing at Officer Ganser, who was still on the floor handcuffing the other individual, uh, that's when I went around and I handcuffed him, and...
Or he was charged with a disorderly conduct?
Yes, sir.
Now, during the time of this incident, you're right outside the, the liquor licensed establishment, literally right outside the, the wall, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's a front door there that, that fronts, um, on, um, Hamilton Street, right?
Yes, sir.
Did you see anyone from the licensed establishment outside, did you talk to anyone?
No, sir.
Did they come out to assist you?
No, sir.
Any bouncer, security around in the area when this was going on?
No, sir.
Any, uh, other than the person that was arrested by yourself, any other charges filed against anyone?
Uh, I believe other individuals were arrested.
Okay, all right. Are you aware if any of your fellow officers had to use what's called OC spray?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, how, tell us about that, what?
Some of the crowd, uh, I believe they didn't want to disperse, so, uh, OC spray was, uh, used.
How many, um, officers were required to respond to this particular incident, do you recall?
I can't recall, but, uh, more than, more than eight.
More than eight officers?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have no further questions, uh, of Officer...
I have none.
Okay.
All right, I'd like you to thank Officer Gomez.
Thank you, Officer Gomez, and go on.
Who do we have left?
Detective Alexander, sir.
Okay, Detective, I'd like to call Detective Alexander, thank you.
What's counting, just one people?
This is gonna be on 20 again.
Detective, bring your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the look to yourself you got.
Yes, sir.
Name and rank?
Uh, Joshua Alcindor, I'm a detective with, uh, New Brunswick Police Department.
Thank you, Officer, have a seat.
Detective, you're employed by whom? New Brunswick Police, and how long have you been employed by this?
Uh, since 2005.
Okay, and currently you, uh, hold the, uh, rank or the title of detective?
Yes.
Okay, um, back on March 12th, 2016, you were with the New Brunswick Police Department?
Yes, sir.
And you were assigned to the Patrol Division, or were you, what, on special detail or anything?
I was on special detail.
Okay, um, I want you to take a look at C-20, that you hear report regarding the incident that occurred back on March 12th, 2016. Are you familiar with a liquor licensed establishment known as Lounge 732?
Yes, sir.
Okay, take a look at that report, if you need to refresh your recollection, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions about it.
Go ahead.
All right, um, did you respond to a call for service at that particular location?
I was actually already there.
You were there?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the occasion upon which you were there?
I was doing, uh, HDP assignment, I was assigned as security outside, uh, from 10:30 to 2:00 AM.
Right, pursuant to special conditions imposed upon this establishment? Right, pursuant to special conditions imposed upon this establishment, to your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, and when you worked this extra duty job, you're in uniform, correct?
Yes.
And you have a patrol vehicle with you?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what happened, and I know you were here during the testimony of your fellow officer that apparently required you to call for backup.
Yes, it was a pretty uneventful night until about 1:50, they started letting people outside, out the establishment, they came out the side door. Sent you to left the area, it was actually two groups. There was a set of five males standing in the front, and there was another group standing by the constant area. They were having different conversations. Somehow, they're kind of, they started yelling back and forth at each other.
Okay.
And a fight ensued.
Alright, so that necessitated your call for backup for service?
Yes.
Okay, and did your fellow officers arrive?
Yes, they did.
Okay, tell me what happened with these two groups? Did they eventually cause an altercation?
Yes, they began initially just yelling back and forth at each other. I tried to tell them to knock it off, leave, leave. They didn't, they basically just ran towards each other and then started fighting, started throwing punches. Immediately as they started throwing punches, that's when I called for backup because I was by myself.
Right.
And backup came, and they were actually still fighting when some of the officers arrived.
What, if anything, did you or your fellow officers do to try to disperse the crowd?
We tried to restrain, but there were a couple of guys that were fighting, OC spray was used, it didn't seem to have an effect on them, they still continued fighting until it created a full wave of fighting.
Did you observe any of these individuals to be intoxicated?
Yes.
Okay, and you did observe them come out of the lounge? There definitely were patrons of Lounge 732?
I observed them go in and come out.
Go in and come out?
Yes.
Now, during this whole occurrence, were there any security officers from the lounge outside trying to help?
At the time, I did not notice security, I did notice the owner.
Is that Mr. Garcia who's seated behind you?
Yes.
Okay, where did you notice him at, or what did he do?
Once everybody was pretty much arrested and separated, he was actually outside, you know, he made a couple of statements to me that, you know, one of the guys who was arrested is a regular, and he, you know, hasn't done anything wrong, but he's, you know, he's a regular at the establishment.
Okay. Did he do anything to try to break up the altercation when it was happening?
I did not notice if he did anything, to be honest with you, my focus was on the gentleman on the ground fighting, I really did not see what Mr. Garcia did do.
Okay. How many times on prior occasions or subsequent occasions since this incident, have you worked extra duty at this establishment?
That was the only time.
That was the only time?
Yes.
One only time?
That's the only time, yes.
Okay. Do you know whether charges were filed against any of the individuals who involved in the fight?
Three individuals were arrested, and they were charged with disorderly conduct.
Okay. Did you or anyone else, to your knowledge, file any criminal charges against the liquor license establishment, or any type of warrants violations?
I did not, no.
Okay. In your course of duties and responsibilities as a detective, probably been an officer since 2005, have you had other occasions to respond to calls for service at this establishment?
Yes, I've been, I've been working, I've actually been working in narcotics unit.
Right.
And on a couple of occasions when we're working at nighttime, we get, we'll hear calls for, you know, fights and things like that, we'll go as backup officers.
Okay, and that usually happens around closing time?
Yes.
Alright, I have no further questions of the detective. Mr. Seeger?
Your testimony about other calls, you can't even tell us if it was in this license or you had any?
Uh, no.
So really, you can't pinpoint any particular accusation that relates to any of those other calls, other than the one where you were on extra duty?
Yes, exactly.
And Mr. Cooper, it was closing time, correct?
Yes, it was.
And Mr. Cupertino was in, Mr. Garcia was inside?
I believe he was still inside, yes.
And the crowd was being asked, like?
They were actually outside.
So the insinuation, I think, from Mr. Chan's question was that somehow he wasn't doing anything to affect the situation, but he was actually getting patrons outside the bar, getting them out of the bar at closing time?
Well, I don't know what he was doing inside, but the patrons were coming outside.
But it's not fair that your testimony wouldn't be, he stood by and did nothing?
I never said I stood by, I said I did not notice if he did anything, because my focus were, was on the gentleman fighting on the ground.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, no redirect. Thank you, Detective.
Thank you.
That be it? I think be it, city has no further witnesses, I believe we covered it.
Thank you.
Not all the counts, all the ones that have witnesses. Mr. Seeger, do you have any other witnesses you'd like to call?
If I could have a minute?
Sure.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Just, President, members of the council, what I, going forward, what I suspect we can do when Mr. Seeger is done, we could have a closed session on this matter, we can discuss how you want to go with respect to finding the charges, we can come back out, put that on the record. We also have a liquor license renewal before the same establishment. And I know Detective Raw is recommending special conditions, and I believe this particular hearing and the facts that have been elicited would support that. I want to speak without Mr. Seeger in the room now that I know that he's still gone, so I'll go over that.
I apologize, sir. I did have a witness here earlier, who was DJ related to the drug case.
Yes, DJ.
And unfortunately, he left and texted that he can't get back there yet, pick up his son. But I'd like to, by way of offer of proof, he would testify that he was hired as the DJ, was running late, and asked a friend of his, who is unknown to Mr. Garcia, to go set the equipment up for him, and that gentleman never was in the bar before, and never was again, and Mr. Garcia didn't even know...
Are you speaking of the guy who was arrested for the drug charge?
Yes, yes, yes. So that was my offer of proof on the point, but unfortunately, he's not coming back this evening. But I would call Mr. Garcia as to the two incidents that the officers testified. Mr. Garcia, several of the officers testified about an incident that occurred in your bar, correct? So I wanted to direct your attention to each of the nights. Were you in the bar on, when Detective Alexander was working extra duty? Yeah, was it March 12th?
Yes.
Do you remember what happened that night?
Well, I don't know, I was outside, I was inside, so...
It was closing time, correct?
Yes.
And what were, what were you intending to at closing time?
Who has to leave? That's twenty minutes before two, that's calling, we attend all the music, or whatever, I had inside, I didn't hold any higher people, or my security, people leaving. So, when it happened, I was inside my bar.
Now, I guess the insinuation is here that you're not concerned about your patrons as they leave. Is that true? Are you, are you concerned about your patrons when they leave? Do you understand my question?
Not really.
Okay. As a, as a licensed establishment, you understand the responsibility of attending the safety of people inside?
Yes.
And the safety of people outside, correct?
Right.
There was no fight inside, correct?
No.
But you were attending to people leaving the establishment on time?
Yes.
Now, had you, did you even know that there was a fight outside? Had you known there was a fight, would you have taken any action to make sure the people were safe? If you knew there was a fight outside, would you have taken action to assure the people's safety?
Yes.
And did you have people inside, security staff, personnel, you know, that were hired by your company, that would have assisted had they known it was going on outside? With regard to count fifteen, several officers testified about the physical altercation that occurred on October 3rd, 2015. Do you, do you remember being there at that point in time?
Yes, I remember a lot.
Were you aware that there was a fight outside?
I don't remember.
Do you, do you remember, having any knowledge of people with firearms or guns in your establishment?
This happened in 2014.
No, I'm talking about the incident where there was a reported shots fired. You didn't know of any shots fired?
No, I didn't know.
No one reported it to you?
No.
So you had no personal knowledge of that? At this point, I don't have anything further.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, your security, go outside at all?
Yes, they go outside.
Yeah, closing?
No, they stay inside too, asking people to leave.
Okay.
After, I close, they go out.
Right.
Yes.
They don't go outside to move people around or anything like that? They just stay inside?
If they see, any problem, they go out.
If they see?
If they see, yes.
And going back to your other original thing where you indicated that the previous lawyer told you it was okay with the floor plan, did you get anything in fighting or anything from that lawyer or anything, about the floor plan being okay to do until they get the okay?
Okay, I would like to get a motion to go into closed session on the hearing of...
Before we do that, just a matter of formality, perhaps we haven't been that formal, but I wanted to move C-1 through 41 into the record, if you will, I believe I had them talk about everything, you have any issue with that?
There were some reports in there of officers who didn't testify, so that's, that's my, I mean, if you want, I'll certainly go over them with you.
Well, we go over them, we're just, I just, for purposes of what we did today, I just want to be able to stipulate that we looked at them, and they were entered at, I think there might have been one or two, right?
Yeah, I think Officer Way's testimony was on somebody else's report.
Right.
And he had none, none of his own reports in there.
That's fine, that's fine, we'll work that out.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Egan. So, yes, it's council's pleasure to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the disposition.
Yes, we're going to closed session to discuss the matter of Casmas Inc. Bring a motion.
Councilmembers? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Can I get a motion to go back into open session, please?
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Mr. Chan?
Yes. Please, for, let the council know when you take office. Right, record reflect the closed session discussion by the council, Senator Condon testimony heard, the reports, the temporary court issued, reviewed the charges, reviewed the arguments of council relative to the charges, and the council is prepared to make a disposition with respect to charges dated April 12, 2016. I'll read a resolution, which I have identified on your agenda as R-071665 by the municipal council, whereas those charges have been filed against Casmas Inc. trading as JJ Tavern, Lounge 732, the holder of the coronary retail consumption license 121433-034-003 in the City of New Brunswick dated April 12, 2016, which alleged violations of the New Jersey Administrative Code and New Jersey statutes. Whereas City Council Resolution R-061650 set July 20th, 2016, at 4:30 PM for a hearing on said charges. Whereas on July 20th, 2016, at 4:30 PM, Casmas Inc. trading as JJ Tavern, Lounge 732, appeared with Council Paul Seeger to respond to said charges. Whereas testimony was heard from Detective Ryan Woodraw, Police Officer Stuart Way, Police Officer Reagan, Police Officer Alexander, and the licensee provided an opportunity to call witnesses. Mr. Cupertino testified on behalf of the licensee as well. Whereas after conclusion of all testimony, the City Council finds that Casmas Inc. trading as JJ Tavern, Lounge 732, is guilty of violating counts 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 15, 16, and 20 of the complaint dated April 12, 2016. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council that the license of Casmas Inc. trading as JJ Tavern, Lounge 732, be and hereby is suspended for a period of 180 days commencing midnight July 21st, 2016, as set forth above. Be a further resolved, certified copies be sent by the City Clerk to following parties, including Director of Police, Detective Woodraw, obviously the licensee, Mr. Seeger, and Jonathan Forsen, Director of Division of ATC. If that resolution encompasses the decision of this particular, of the counts on this particular matter, we can then make a motion.
I'd like to get a motion on that resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any public comment?
Any public comment?
Can I make a comment?
Can?
Señor Garcia, esto va a venir usted.
Señor, dear.
And I'm going to say in English also. I'm just telling him that having a liquor license is a big responsibility, and it's not a bad excuse to know with the law, to know with the regulations of ATC, that's not a bad excuse to say, I don't know it also, but it's only, he should know that as an owner of a bar, especially of an establishment, that has a liquor license, that's a big responsibility, and I'm just suggesting that he learns, or he gets oriented on what it is, the responsibility to own me a bar and having a liquor license in the City of New Brunswick for his benefit.
Thank you, Escobar. Vote for him, vote please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti abstaining. So noted, Council President Egan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, I know this was a long hearing. I know this was a long hearing and I thank all the police work and everybody that was involved in Mr. Shami's office. As you can see, it takes a lot of time and, but we did get to the argument.
Before we move on to the consent agenda, we have one more item with, before we go back as opposed to the gala. We have one more item to deal with with Casmas Inc. We have interim license which expires at midnight tomorrow. You've effectively suspended the license at midnight tomorrow. However, their liquor license renewal is up for consideration. I know that the council has heard about this particular establishment. I believe Detective McGraw has a recommendation that special conditions, should the council be so inclined to renew this license, be placed upon the licensee. And I will state what I believe Detective McGraw's recommendation is, is there's a special condition of police extra duty on evenings that we had agreed to in the past from 10:00 to 2:30 a.m. It was on Friday and Saturday evenings. My understanding, Detective McGraw is recommending that it be on every evening the licensed establishment is open, based upon incidents and calls for service at that location on Tuesday nights and things of that nature. The other special condition is the notification, 72-hour notification of special events. And if the council is inclined to renew the license in the first instance and do so with special conditions, the resolution will articulate that a special condition relative to promotions or special events or anything involving a DJ, a band, a singer, a juggler, a magician, whatever.
Face painter?
Face painter. But I don't want to speak for the detective. Detective, why don't you tell the council your feelings?
I do agree, Mr. Shami. You spoke of this at length. It would appear after imposing additions subsequent to the last round of charges, the licensee changed his operations at his more, his busier nights, when it's where he didn't have an officer. He was making a point, he wanted to find officers on the street and telling them, make sure you write in your memo that there's only 30 people inside or 10 people inside or I'm not busy. Trying to give the appearance that, you know, he's not busy, he's not getting money, he's not causing any problems for the Sunday night. I'm getting reports and complaints, violations of the license code, social media things. So, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Shami in that sense.
Thank you. So we're going to do that in our resolutions or we want to do that now, Mr. Shami, as far as renewing the license with these special?
If you're inclined to renew the license with that special condition, you can do it now.
Okay.
I kind of pinned that with something. Well, actually, I just recited it, so the resolution would reflect that. Obviously, if you entertain a motion and it's seconded, Mr. Seeca or anyone else should have an opportunity to comment.
What I would just say, we have the licensee with regard to this, is he has never afforded the chance that I see some of the other licensee is to hire and implement private. And let me tell you, the real practicality of the difference is the ordinance that requires extra duty is so expensive. You know, you're talking $530 a night per officer. And as a practical matter, that's the profit in a lot of nights. So when you implement an extra duty officer every night, and if I concede the need for it, the expense puts the license holder out of business. And so I would request you consider allowing a private security company to, basically monitor the circumstance. With regard to the evidence that was presented, I think if we look at the number of incidents that happened after the extra duty officers, they went down dramatically. So what we have here in this last period is a pre-November date and then a post-November 2015 date. And I believe there's only one, the officers, the melee's were just in one instance when the police were there anyway. You know what I'm saying? So I think if you separate it, pre-stipulation from post-stipulation over the last license year, it's been much better since the implementation of the stipulation. I realize that could be an argument for the extra duty officers, but what I'm saying is give us the chance to have a private security at a more affordable rate and then judge us as we go forward. And I'm sure Detective McGraw is going to be there. Perhaps consider amending the ordinance and maybe extra duty could be cheaper or more cost effective. I'm sure they have contracts and everything. But if they were in line with private security, I think maybe some of the borrowers here wouldn't be objecting to these conditions. It's really a cost.
Well, if we didn't have 21 charges in front of us, we wouldn't even be talking about this today. So there's got, there's two sides to be arguing here. This is a heavy lift here. I mean, you saw, we just came down with, how many charges, Mr. Shami, did we just do?
Nine. Six, nine, 10 charges. You stand up here.
So, anybody else have anything to add? Anybody want to make a motion on the liquor license renewal, what's the conditions?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson. I stated, stated by Mr. Shami.
What's that?
I stated, as you stated.
Yes, as stated.
Yes.
Anybody else from the public want to comment?
I'm sorry, is anybody like the public, would anybody from the public like to comment on these? Were your liquor license renewal with the special conditions for JJ Tavern? Anybody from the public? Seeing none?
Motion.
Second, again, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Thank you very much again on that thing. Now we can move to the conditions, continuation or termination conditions on ABC license the Gala Cafe restaurant. Can we do all the parties with the Gala Cafe? Mr. Gus is still here?
We've been, Council President, we've been talking outside. We made our resolution. I think we should go with the Egan.
Where were you an hour ago? Okay, we can move into closed session.
Yes.
I got a motion to go into closed session, please, and discuss the Gala Cafe. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes.
And the purpose of the closed session is to discuss a potential resolution of the imposition of special conditions of the renewal of the gala license.
Good evening. We're going to take a motion to go back into open session, please. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Mr. Shami, do you guys think you'd like us on the Gala Cafe restaurant, please?
The closed session entailed extensive discussions relative to renewal of the Gala Cafe and Restaurant Inc. license regarding its imposition of special conditions. I know that Mr. Gus and Ms. Gayden had exchanges back and forth relative to a potential compromise relative to the imposition of special conditions. And I understand that the licensee is agreeable and the council is offering a renewable special conditions that were modified a bit from last year's special conditions. And I'd like to recite those. Condition one, being licensee shall employ private uniform security between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 2:30 a.m. on all Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings for the purpose of maintaining order in and about the license premises. And two, the special condition remains unchanged. All live and recorded music shall be turned off no later than 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday evenings and 11:00 p.m. on Sunday evenings. Those two special conditions, as modified, I understand Mr. Gus is on behalf of licensee consents to those. I think the record should reflect that.
The licensee is present and he accepts those conditions for the renewal of this year. And he deserves his right to, if he has good conduct, to before that, come before the council. Thank you, Mr. Gus. Thank you, sir. Okay, so with those conditions, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody from the council like this, anybody from the public like to speak on those conditions? On that particular bar? Seeing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Again, go ahead, Mr. Shami.
Just for the record, that was Resolution R-071693.
Thank you, Mr. Shami. Thank you, Mr. Shami, for all your work and spending all the time. Ms. Gayden, I forgot her name again. I want to thank Detective McGraw. Where'd he go?
He already left.
Left?
He did a lot of that.
Kathy, would you like Detective McGraw though and Detective DeBonis though, all the hard work they've done on the town report? And keep up the good work and these people that were giving these, you know, were changing some of the conditions, just keep an eye on them, please. Just let the votes go. Thank you very much. Now we can move to ordinances on second reading. 601, orders to amend supplement three five general orders in Sydney Bronx, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1016, stopping standing or parking, Section 101650, Schedule 20, Tomlin Park and Liberty Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Sir, we're only on the ordinance right now. When I say public, take care of your children. Take care of your kids, that's most important, please. Mr. Cradville on the ordinance?
Yes. Good evening, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, the Brunswick Today newspaper. Just really quickly, can you tell me what changes are happening on Liberty Street for the parking? Is this related to the new development there or the Wolfson being pulled down?
This ordinance was instituted when there was a bypass through Liberty Street due to construction. And since that construction and the road improvements have been completed, the parking on Liberty Street is being reinstated. So meter, meter parking is being added back to the block. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on that ordinance? Seeing none?
Good view.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. 602, orders to amend supplement three five general orders in Sydney Bronx, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1012, traffic patrol regulations, Section 101240, Schedule 6, stop intersections and reservoir avenue and park driveway, stop sign on park driveway. Nickel Avenue Sanford Street, stop sign on Sanford Street. Sanford Street and Nickel Avenue, stop sign on Nickel Avenue. Nickel Avenue and Park driveway, stop sign on Park driveway. Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance, 602? Anybody from the public? Seeing none?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. 603, orders to amend supplement three five general orders in Sydney Bronx, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1016, stopping standing or parking, Section 101620, Schedule 24, no parking at any time. And Schedule 26, no parking certain hours, alternate parking, street cleaning program, Van Dyke Avenue. Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Yes, sir, Charles Cradville.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville. Can you just tell me the motivation and purpose for these changes?
There is a business on Van Dyke Avenue that is not able to get his trucks in and out of the business because of the parking on the street. The parking on the street is near a park and ride facility. The park and ride facility has overflowed onto the street. And so this is an ordinance in order to curtail parking on parts of that to allow access and ingress to this particular business and other businesses in the area.
Thank you. And so it's only for certain hours of the day?
I notice. 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
Two hours.
Okay. What's the significance of those hours? Is that when the trucks all come in?
Yes.
That's what, okay. Can you identify the business or what type of business it is, at least?
I could give that to you if you call my office. I can tell you this evening.
Van Dyke Avenue, either an outback grocery store or in one of those.
Probably one of the warehouses. I'll follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Okay, motion and a sitting. We have that?
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Ordinance is on first reading, 604, orders to amend supplement three five general orders in Sydney Bronx, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1016, stopping standing or parking, Section 101620, Schedule 24, no parking at any time, park driveway.
Move the ordinance setting down August 3rd at 5:30 p.m. for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. 605, orders to adopt the ferry redevelopment plan in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance setting down August 3rd at 5:30 p.m. same date to be advertised for public hearing.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We have resolutions. We have Resolutions 661 to 695, whether we're holding or pulling 664, 666, and 667. Would anybody from the...
Question, first, two questions. 677, do you know what the original location was, or anybody?
677?
The Rockers.
What street? They changed the location. Obviously, the street. Do you know what it was before? Better concerned about Friday, kids are back, businesses are back.
We're talking about 677, it's about...
It's Labor Day.
It's Labor Day.
Friday, September 9th?
No.
Sunday, September 5th. Friday is a rainy day.
So let's go on with that.
We've got the rain day. That changed the location.
If you don't know if it was a street or whether it was inside or anything.
No, it was a street. But I know, I can find out.
And then for 679, does Nickel Avenue between Delavan and Sanford need to be also closed?
My understanding, Engineering Department looked at this, we're going to defer to them with respect to what needed to be closed. This is just for the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, just assuming that people are coming down Nickel Avenue, could make a right-hand turn on Sanford, but it's going to be closed and they're not going to know it until they get down there. Probably somebody.
We'll check and see if we can have police.
Something like that.
Before they enter the intersection. Check them out.
That's 9 a.m. for your ribbon cutting?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. From the public with Chicago on resolutions? Yes, Mr. Cradville. If you want to move.
Can you please ask Captain, tell us a little bit about why, what the need is and, you know, whether this is something that the department already has or why we're advertising to get this started?
It's just a maintenance agreement for software we currently have. It's reported that the company we use now, and I apologize, I don't know the name, it's reported that they are going to go out of business. So we have to re-advertise this company and learn that our lower maintenance cost, or we're paying now anyway, so it should be a plus savings in the end.
Okay, just tell me a little bit, what is digital video forensic software? Is that, what does that enable the police to do?
It enables the police to examine anything in digital format, video, audio, and computer related data.
Excellent. I guess you could zoom in on stuff or, you know, slow motion, those kind of things?
Really not going to discuss the technical aspects of how we do our investigations.
Okay. Next one is 673, disciplinary hearing was held for an employee named Eddie Booker. Can you tell me what was the verdict of the hearing officer?
Well, we can't, it's personnel matter, Mr. Cradville, we don't discuss personnel matter, you know that.
Okay, well, I mean, you could tell me if he was terminated. Is Mr. Booker still on the payroll? Does he still work for the city government?
Still works for the city.
Yes, he does.
Is he suspended?
Like I said, it's personnel matter.
So his current status, you won't tell me if he's suspended or not?
Mr. Shammy?
I don't, I don't answer that question. I, I, I venture to say that it's a personnel matter. Discipline was mended out as a result of the matter. Actually, I think the matter was resolved before the hearing was concluded. So whatever happened was consent.
And to approximately, when was the hearing?
A couple of months ago.
Couple of months ago, okay. And so he's still on the payroll and the matter was settled, you said?
Yeah, he's still an employee at the city.
The matter was.
Can you identify who his representative was? Was he an attorney?
He had a union, the union represents employees, the union attorney.
Misorable Employee Union Attorney Representative.
M.E.A. attorney. And just to be clear, I believe he's a laborer with the Department of Public Works, is that accurate, is that correct?
You know the answers to the questions, apparently, Mr. Cradville.
I just wanted to verify, that's the same?
I'm not actually certain of his title, but he is an employee.
Okay. I think pedestrian safety is a really big issue in many places, but especially here in New Brunswick, where we have a lot of pedestrians. Number 681 is a $15,000 grant from the state for pedestrian safety. Can you please explain how the city is going to use the grant and what it hopes to accomplish?
Captain Miller?
This is a grant that we've offered the last couple of years, you know, $2,000. It goes towards both education in the schools as well as enforcement on the streets.
So those would be the type of operations where some police pretends to be a pedestrian crossing the street and then people are ticketed if they don't stop for the officers? That's what you mean by enforcement?
That could be one enforcement tactic, as well as monitoring the streets and any violation, you know, that involves pedestrian safety, that is the light operation.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other one I wanted to ask about is 695, this is also dealing with liquor license, rescinding a previous resolution for a pocket license. Can you please explain to me what the purpose of this is?
I can address that, Council President. Apparently what happened is this particular pocket license, in order to be renewed, they have to file a verified petition with the Division of ABC. After we discovered that they had not filed a petition, we're under the belief that they did, they didn't have standing to have their license renewed. So we have to rescind the resolution renewing the license. They have to petition ABC to allow us to renew the license. And should that authority for permission be granted by the ABC, then.
You have to back us.
So it was a step that was.
Missed a step.
Understood. So when you say pocket license, that means that it's not in use right now, it's not an establishment that, do you, does anybody recall which establishment most recently had that license or would be a place we'd recognize?
I have no idea off the top of my head.
Do you know what pocket they put it in?
It was a jazzy.
Do you know what pocket he put it in?
It was a Zelladon, a jazzy.
What one was it?
Jazzy.
Jazzy.
A pocket of someone we can't pronounce.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Anybody on resolutions? Seeing nobody on resolutions?
Who's the resolution?
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. Five minutes to address the council. Come on up.
Hi, yes, Daniel Morgan, we're in Frederick Street. I wasn't here for the last two meetings, but I still left, I'm a little late. I say thank you for fixing the crosswalk for Lee and Delavan. I assume the city did take care of that. And then also to thank, thank you to Charlie, where the, the, the story that he wrote about me and Mr. Loveland. But today, I don't know if the city is aware of, wow, let's add one more to Lee Avenue. That was Monday, about 3:45, Lee and between Power and Howard Street, we had another motor, motor vehicle accident. So like I said, I hope the city, I was told that they were going to start to be doing the crosswalk, the lines to show car where to stop. I was also told that they were going to start, I'm not sure the name, of the orange sticks where we know parking on the corner with Lee and Lawrence, but I haven't seen any work being done yet. Would you please tell me when?
We can't give you an approximate time when it's going to start, and we're getting to it.
Well, that's where I know that it was approved and they said that that was what, a month, month ago?
Okay.
So, okay, I hope to see something soon because like I said, wow, you have another one on the list. We want to wait till like they said, wow, you must have five car accidents before you can really take action with that for a four-way stop sign, anything? Come on, this is where I say that's why the city is at fault. Why do you really wait till someone is really injured to take action? So like I said, I hope you can list that in the book. Then also I'm asking, when are they going to start for Lee and Comstock, Lee and Delavan, Ward and Remson, and Handy and Remson? Where are they supposed to be putting the crosswalk lights or something?
Is that from the engineer? Yes.
The contractor has not begun yet. So that contractor is not mobilized to begin doing that work.
Well, I was told the moment that the children get out of school that they were going to proceed in doing that, would they get the market?
Yes, they are proceeding to do that, but he has not started yet. He has not.
Well, wow, what, are they going to wait till what, kids go back to school and say they can't get to it? So what, will you get to it next month or?
Soon as the contractor is free and is in the city, it will begin.
Okay, thank you.
And has other contracts unfinished?
I understand that, like I said, I have paid patience, like I said, this was over six months ago that they, this has been approved. I have patience, I understand that what I say is not the only thing that goes on. Now, another situation, that's with Baldwin and Railroad, Baldwin Street and Railroad Avenue, where I brought to the Board of Education's attention, it's been over a year now that I spoke to you about where the city redid Railroad Avenue, which I gave you plenty of pictures, and how you took up the railing, so how the cars keep coming to the parking lot, trying to avoid Handy Street, to wait in the traffic. And you have to remember, this is a one-way street and how I can't keep my camera on me at all times, but yes, you have to realize, you have the Board of Education here with school, school buses, where the school bus was turning down the one-way and then the car was coming from this way. I mean, you really had a close call. So I hope you do, like I said, it's been about a year and a half, and like I said, with the Board of Education, I showed them pictures also. Like I said, I hope you do put the railing back up there because the city was the one that took it down to redo the road.
Okay. Somebody writing that down?
I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. We got it.
Oh, you said you got it over a year ago, but are you going to respond to doing something before what, someone gets hurt? God forbid, what, before someone gets hurt? Like I said, you have plenty of school buses that exit there from the Adult Learning Center. So I hope it doesn't take you another year, year or so to respond, or God forbid somebody does get hurt, because it would draw to your attention.
I hope it doesn't either.
Okay, thank you. And then another situation where I brought to my attention, as far as garbage cans, that's where the city's giving out tickets to, just because how someone has a garbage can for someone to travel and put their garbage in, where you've been giving out plenty of tickets for that? Is a person not allowed to have a garbage can for someone to walk by and put their garbage in?
No, they're supposed to have every day, a garbage can is supposed to be only out at five o'clock, I believe, before the night of the taking out the garbage? And then I guess by, what, 11 o'clock or was it something like that?
No, I'm not talking about and you put your garbage out. I'm saying for instance, like the city has a garbage can on the corner, garbage for the public, and how, where, is it okay for a resident to put one in front of their house and not to get a ticket?
No. No.
Because where, where house, it was brought to my attention due to where house, so many places that are getting ticket for litter around their house and due to where they're trying to, like I said, keep a garbage can out for people to put their garbage in and you're giving out tickets for that?
Yes. Yes.
So wow, for someone who's trying to help keep the neighborhood clean, you're going to ticket them for it?
I don't know what to say, Eddie, I miss my role or more, I'm sorry.
Is there a lot of littering on, we can always go back to the, it would possibly put out a garbage can, but citizens cannot.
No.
Okay.
Thank you. It's a right-of-way obstruction, I think.
Well, those are great ideas.
Yes, Mr. Cradville, good evening.
Good evening once again. It's been a long day, but I'll just ask really only one question, wanted to ask Councilwoman Garladi, why she abstained from the vote on the cats mask?
You promised I'd say one question to that? You said only one question. I can answer this, boy, right now, we can get up and leave.
Well, I have some comments.
She was not here at the beginning of the hearings, so the city attorney advised her to abstain because she was not present for the entire hearing. That's most of your.
No, I have some comments to make.
Oh, my, my.
But, but I.
I'm trying to put a honest country or something. Aren't you trying to put a party?
Okay, so I want to, you know, credit where credit is due, I, you know, I've been pushing for transparency, particularly the police department. I think it's a good step in the right direction that now the accident reports, crash reports of all the motor vehicle accidents, crashes that the department responds to are now available for free online on the city website. And I think that that's a good step in the right direction.
Thank you.
And I would like to see.
More.
More. And I would really like to see New Brunswick Police at least do the same, the same level of transparency that the Rutgers Police Department has.